Rental properties, rather than selling them to somebody who's gonna make some multimillion dollar mansion out of them. So, that's my idea.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any other comments?
Do you know where the information is supposed to get directed to?
I think it should be to the Affordable Housing Trust.
For the board of select.
They own the land.
Make sure that goes over there.
Yeah.
That's well.
Thank you, Barbara. So, the first item on the agenda is a town statement on the calculation of the 1.5% land area for achievement of safe harbor. So, I'm actually gonna read a short statement here, and it's a joint statement from myself, the chairman of the planning board, and Chris Houston, the chair of, not the board of select, but the select board. So, here we go. On August 19th, Weston Zoning Board of Appeals opened a public hearing to hear an application from 518 South Avenue LLC for a comprehensive permit for the construction of 200 rental housing units under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B. During the hearing, town planner Imai Kalani Iw presented evidence that the town has achieved, quote, "safe harbor", unquote, based on a 1.5% land mass calculation as provided for under Chapter 40B. In turn, the ZBA appropriately invoked this 1.5% safe harbor to assert and preserve its right to deny or condition the 518 South Avenue application without being subject to overturn by the Massachusetts Housing Appeals Committee. In prior analysis, including during the Housing Production Plan, or HPP, process, and in connection with prior 40B applications, the town had previously perceived that this 1.5% safe harbor had not been met. However, based on further information and consultation with town council this past July, the town's planners' calculations were updated and demonstrated that the town had achieved this 1.5% safe harbor provided under the 40B statute. The town intends to present and defend this conclusion and the ZBA's invocation of the 1.5% safe harbor to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development and elsewhere as needed until the matter is closed. Because the ZBA's above decision, just discussed decision, on the 518 South Avenue application is under appeal by the developer, and because several other 40B projects in Weston are also pending or under appeal, the select board and the planning board will continue to limit their comments on these matters to safeguard the interest of the town. And again, that's signed by Christopher Houston, the chair of the select board of Weston, and myself, the chairman of the planning board. So, no questions have been taken there. I just wanted to make sure people understood that. There were lots of questions that came to us here. Okay, now on to more media planning board matters. Next on the agenda is continued public hearing for 241 Glen Road. And just want to say, overall, tonight, we have a very tight agenda. So, for all, we have three hearings on either continued applications or new applications. And I'd like for all presenters to please indulge in efficient use of our time. We'd like to see if we can fit tonight into a 9:30 conclusion. So, I thank you in advance for being efficient with your time. For each of the hearings, what I'd like to try to do is have the applicants present in 20 minutes uninterrupted, and then after you present, then we'll ask you any questions on clarification. Then we'd like to hear from residents, and then we'd like to hear from my consultants, and then it'll come back to us for our final opinions or final questions on all that. And I'm hoping that each one of those can fit into 40 minutes, 20 minutes uninterrupted, and then 20 minutes of interaction. So, with that, let's begin with 241 Glen Road. You're on the clock.
I like being on the clock. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'm Glenn Travis, the principal at GMT Home Designs, representing our client for 241 Glen Road. I'm gonna handle the architectural piece of this project. And then with us is John with JC Engineering, and he's gonna actually go first and talk about the septic system and the site in general, and I'll chime in as well on that. And then also, we have with us Mike White. He's our landscape architect, and he'll speak to that piece of the puzzle here as well. So, that being said, we'd like to dive in. So, John, come on up.
I'm gonna turn to this page for you, my friend. I have a laser pointer if you want to use it.
Sure.
Are you easier?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, site 241 Glen Road. What we have here.
Put it into the glare or out of the glare?
What do you want me to?
Shift this way?
Ship it over to the data.
First of all, we're right here.
Or use the large one on screen. That actually might be easy for everybody.
Unfortunately, that one is hard to read. So, for us, I know us.
You can make reference.
We're gonna need this.
Clock is ticking here.
Yeah.
Is it our easement or is it the whole section?
It doesn't stop here.
Yeah. No stoppage time.
No stoppage time.
All right. So, again, 241 Glen Road. Basically, what we did, in the existing home, we are proposing a new, tear-down, basically rebuilt. What we've done is we've actually kept the, we're in the scenic, scenic road, so we're here before you for that particular purpose. So, we kept the existing driveway, as you see on the existing, and I'll show you the proposed, with minimal tree clearing, same curb cut that we currently have now. So, we've gotten comments that.
Flip over to the right.
Yeah, flip over to the proposed, right. So, here we have the existing, as you can see. And this is what we're proposing. So, same curb cut, as you can see here, or similar.
We can't.
You can't see that?
That whole thing to the left. We'd like to just look at the screen.
That one there. All right.
We'd like to look at the screen.
I guess so. We gotta move out of the way.
You can zoom in too, if that helps.
Sorry, Glenn. Yeah, thanks, Glenn, yeah, for the audience.
That's nice and big. That's great.
Awesome. All right. Yeah, we'll use that. Thank you. And I'll use this to, I guess. So, what you see here, so there's the proposed driveway. What you see there, this is three series of leaching chambers, which is the septic system that you see. The driveway that we have here, we're providing infiltration. Where is it? So, the infiltration trenches are, oh, there we go. Okay. So, infiltration trenches are here, are just a added benefit, if you will. The existing site compared to post-development site. So, what we did is we tried to match, and what we're required to do is take the existing site and match, or not match, but exceed with the post-development rate of runoff for the drainage. And what we've done is we've achieved that without this infiltration bed here. So, you see a 60 line feet of crushstone. So, we've provided that. That helps in the driveway.
So, even on that.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah.
So, on that note, we have a table. So, even without this infiltration system, believe it or not, the proposed conditions of our new house compared to what's there now, there is a two-year storm event. The peak rate of runoff is reduced actually by 26% under our new conditions. Under a two-year storm event, the peak runoff volume is reduced by 21% based on the new conditions that we're setting for this lot. Now, that said, it goes up exponentially when we add this piece right here, and it goes from 26% to 47%. And then the runoff volume is reduced by 37%. So, clearly, our recommendation as a bonus is to add that little extra piece there to really deal with the runoff.
Thank you. And basically, that's what I was gonna do, and I thought you were gonna read that into the record, so I apologize for that. So, basically, we have a three-chamber system here. That's the septic system. That dock, that dock blue, that's the septic. And the cyan here, that's actually the drainage for the roof, for the roof and the leaders, as you can see around. So, the cyan here, see that lines, directing around, so down. And so, we have, you know, 10 500 gallon H20 leaching chambers that is gonna capture the runoff from the roof, which is what Glenn was basically giving you the hard numbers for essentially. So, we meet, we meet the criterion with respect to that we actually decrease the amount of rate of runoff and volume that currently comes off this site by this project. We actually meet that. With respect to, as I said, the driveway, which was our largest challenge essentially, trying to maintain the existing trees, which the landscape architect will discuss, is we tried to maintain the existing driveway and grading as best as we could. And again, as Glenn said, this infiltration, we meet the requirements without this, so we gave kind of added bonus, if you will, to the project. So, existing three-bedroom, we're going to propose six-bedroom, and we haven't been approved by the board. We have not been approved by the board yet.
So, one of the things in locating what you see here, these here, we had to shift it west 13 feet, in no small part, because there's an easement on the property right here. And so, in order to really maintain the spacing from this property here at 233 and our property here, the landscape architect will speak to that in a moment, but we clearly have a landscaping component that we're adding over the easement. That being said, we're also updating the gas line to this house. We're updating the gas line to our property, and also, we have the phone and cable along here as well, and water as well. So, this easement is incredibly important, so that's why this was shifted slightly this way. When you see the landscaping plan, you'll see that the tree cover here still really minimizes from the street being able to see this house, which is really up on a knoll. So, we'll get to that point in a little bit. So, a lot of planning went into that location on the property.
Correct. Basically, our, we would, you know, we were, landscape architect was instrumental in saying was the architect. And what we did, we basically designed the septic system and the drainage, so, and we meet the requirements and regulations. So, any other questions, I guess I would defer.
The other piece, I'll say that is really important, is this existing driveway. So, if you go by the street to be able to, and we wanted to, we looked at different options in the schematic design phase, far as what do we do with this driveway. We looked at potentially coming over here and coming across the site. That ultimately was problematic with the amount of retaining walls, et cetera, that we needed to deal with. So, we said, let's work with the existing driveway that's here. The challenge, though, is in turning into the property here, we created, in essence, a widening of the driveway about by nine feet. So, when you're coming down the driveway, so you can turn onto the road here. Really, you know, in my opinion, it should be bigger. But, we're really trying to respect the existing conditions, which is a stone wall, which I'm a friend and lover to stone walls as well. I'm a big, I have stone walls on my property. So, I think whenever you can preserve on a scenic road, trees and stone walls, I think is really important. So, we're trying to do that. However, it's still gonna be tricky for the owner to be able to make a turn onto the road here, even with that nine feet. So, on that note, I think the landscaping piece should be talked about.
Thank you.
So, go to L, or L1, or L2.
So, with the landscape plan, I'll start with the tree removal plan first. Effectively, we're removing 45 trees currently from the site, seven of which are dead at the moment. So, it amounts to a total of 38 removed trees, and we're replacing on the landscape plan with 41 new trees, a mix of evergreen deciduous species that I'll get into.
Want to go to the next one?
Yeah.
Oh, you do that? Yeah, I zoomed in. That's all I can.
Okay. And then, the landscape plan, we look to along the right-hand side of the property with the utility corridor, we're restoring screening between 233 and 241 Glen Road with 10 to 12-foot, 12 to 14-foot height evergreen trees, primarily Norway spruce, Fraser fir. And then, the lower portion of the site, the shadier area of the site, we have hemlock to screen along the road here, Glen Road, right along the edge adjacent to the driveway, and also on the upper part of the stone wall, as you look from Glen Road into the property. So, in the view corridors, we've looked to kind of provide some effective screening from the street. And also, around the edges of the property, the disturbed areas, we've restored with screening, a mix of evergreen trees, and also incorporated large shade trees, primarily sugar and red maple, for dense kind of coverage and growth between the two properties. Then also, a mix of deciduous and evergreen shrubs, primarily rhododendron, bad bird, and a series of flowering trees in certain portions of the site.
So, a couple of other things to point out is, we wanted to, in way of dealing with noise with the generator, the generator's here behind the garage, so we put a buffer of landscape around that. And also, the AC condensers here, we did the same thing at that location as well. Yeah, location, yeah, it's in this spot here, but we've got a landscaping buffer around there as well. So, we can't really build or put any trees on this area here, but you can see with where the house is located, far as an access to the street and where the driveway is, we've got a pretty good buffer of, you know, full-grown trees that really block that view. And the existing house, it's hard to see, but it's right here in gray. So, we're actually, you know, taking a portion of where the existing house is and where our great room is as part of where that house is now. You want to go to your lighting page?
Sure. As far as lighting, total lumen count right now is just over 12,000. 12,532 of the plan reflects both fixtures in and around the home, recess lights, and one postlight at the street at the end of the driveway.
Why don't you tell us where the lights are?
Sure. There's a postlight here at the driveway. This series of wall sconce fixtures, both the front door, and also wall sconce fixtures on the face of the garage, front elevation. And then, again, fixtures in the back of the home, there's two entry doors off of the new terrace, inside door in the back, wall sconce fixture, right at the door, in security lighting. And then, two pathway fixtures at the front walk.
So, let's speak to this a little bit.
Yeah, next one is just sections through the site. On this one here, the red dash line shows the finished floor elevation of the new home, and then the proposed grade here, which we're lowering slightly. And here, you can get a sense of the proposed buffer, again, a mix of the existing trees, and also, for scale, the new evergreen and deciduous trees. Effectively, the evergreen trees are 12 to 14 feet tall. And then, we have three-and-a-half inch caliber deciduous trees, red maple and sugar maple, along that buffer between the two boxes. And also, here, cutting through the site, Glen Road, here on the right-hand side. And again, the view corridor looking up has been screened with new plant being preserved and preserved.
The other thing I want to point out on this plan is the houses nearby, the ridge in relationship to ours. So, it's hard to read the numbers here, but in essence, the existing house ridge elevation is 275.6, and then the proposed ridge height of our home is 282.19. So, it's a few feet taller. But then, the house to the left of the property over here, it's at 287.50, and then you're at, you're down to 270.70 for 233. So, basically, the height of our ridge to the average grade up is about 28 feet. We're allowed 37, so we're well under the requirement as far as that goes. And in relationship to the houses nearby, we're kind of an average. So, this one's taller, this one's lower, and we're in the middle. Kind of makes sense. And then, go down, a little more lining. So, these are just pictures of the site. This is the stone wall that we were referring to, and you looking north along Glen Road, so it's, you know, it's heavily wooded, obviously, you know, this time of year. And then, those pictures of the houses, you know, looking towards 233.
Sorry, you bent straight one way or the other?
Make a better direction.
Yeah, exactly.
So, we just wanted to capture a few existing shots of what's there now. And ultimately, you know, the big thing to point out is when you're driving down the road, this is, in essence, what you see, and more than likely, you'll still see as you go by.
And the existing house was how many square feet?
To the ridge, it was 270.
No, I'm sorry, the plan.
It's less than ours. I don't know exactly.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Could you go over the fixtures? Just walk through the fixtures. She had the slide.
For what picture? A picture? For the light fixtures.
Yeah.
So, here we have a wall lantern fixture along the garage, as well as the wall sconce fixture in the side and the back of the home, the postlight fixture at the driveway. And here, we have the pathlight fixture along the front walk, and also, the wall sconce fixture at the main entry door to the new home, as well as the recess light fixture under the porch. There's three fixtures in front and two in the back, recess fixtures. And the lumen count reflects that, the 12,000.
Great. All right. So, we can go to the front elevation, which is page 18.1.
Are you gonna show us the context, Glenn?
We will.
The storyboard?
Oh, we definitely will.
Yeah. Why don't you do that now?
Sure.
That we typically like to do first for the other.
So, I don't have that one up. Let's see, I want the board here.
So, this is, you know, the storyboard of neighboring houses in relationship to ours, which show the square footage and the lot size, and then where ours falls out as well. So, there's a range here.
Why don't you just walk through it, reviser, starting at 12 o'clock?
So, this little guy at the top is 2,040 square feet on .69 acres, okay? And then, to the right of that is our proposed house at 5,414 on 1.04 acres. This house here is on one acre, and it's 3,227 square feet. The lower right, 2642 on .73 acres. And then, right across the street, this house is 5,160 on .97 acres. Lower left, 3,392 on .72 acres. Right across to the west here, 4,481 on .71 acres. And then, lastly, in the upper left, 3,503 on 1.05 acres. So, these are all the houses in the proximity to our lot.
I see.
Yep. So, the house is a, we used a gambrel roof as a nod to the gambrel shingle-style home that's currently on the lot. And we wanted to make sure that we at least had that as part of our overall design. Like was stated earlier, it's a six-bedroom home, four-and-a-half bathrooms, about 5,414 square feet, not including the garage. As far as the heights go, our first floor is at nine feet, our second floor is eight feet, and our basement is at 10 feet. And so, the building height average is 28.69 feet is where we land.
So, you said the first floor was how many feet?
Nine feet. Yeah, nine feet. And the second floor is eight feet. So, it's a two-and-a-half story home. There's no attic, finished attic space in this house. If you can go to the next screen. So, this is the proposed rear elevation and right elevation. And our clients, they love the look, quite honestly, of a modern farmhouse look, but we also want to respect what's there with the gambrel style. The architectural materials that we're using are noted up here. So, we're using a James Hardy fiber cement. That's a clapboard that you see here. We've got a freeze board that separates that from the Hardy plank board and batten material that was used quite a bit in old farmhouse-style homes. The trim is a white AZEC, and there's a little bit of, sorry, on the door, a little bit of stone along the base. So, wherever there's exposed concrete, we're gonna hide that with a stone veneer. And I always like to use a stone veneer that is more localized. So, in other words, we've got this beautiful field stone, you know, on the property. We want to have a similar look and feel as much as we can for the stone. And then, the shingle, I like to, because you see architectural shingles everywhere, I like to mix it up and do something a little bit different that I still think is classic and timeless. This is from CertainTeed. It's called Highland Slate, and it's more of a designer shingle. It's got a little bit of a slate-type look to it far as the shape. I think when you put that on a home like this, it's pretty sharp, as far as the color working with a white house with black sash windows. And then, there's a piece of just stock that's the Arctic White. It's a smooth face, you know, material that we're gonna use for the board and batten that you can see here as well. I think that's my 20 minutes.
Pretty good. Any questions for the board here?
Sure.
John, why don't you come back up here?
Can somebody give me a short history of the easement, what it's for? It seems that the neighbors' utilities are on the Ethan, which is actually on 251's property, and it's required of it by the easement code or deed or whatever.
Yeah, it's an important question. Yeah, do you want to use this?
Sure.
Come over here maybe where I am, so you're not.
So, you're talking about the easement?
Yes, right there, yeah.
Basically, you know, the easement is just for access, not access, but utilities, right? So.
Yeah, so let me read this to you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you were supposed to, yeah. I apologize, because we have a.
That's okay.
Glenn was supposed to read something in the beginning.
So, Mike Pimentel, he is the engineer that works for John, and I'll read his email that he sent. So, the septic system was moved, like I mentioned earlier, approximately 13.
Who's email are you reading?
Mike Pimentel. He's the engineer that did a lot of the legwork on the site plan.
He's your engineer?
No, he's his engineer.
Mike works for me. Mike was supposed to be here this evening, but Quinn and the ten. So, basically, that's why. Mike is a little more familiar with it than me, so.
So, what he noted was, we moved it 13 feet west, so.
The easement or the utilities.
Yeah, because.
Wait, before you go into that, she asked a question. Tell us about the easement.
Yeah, what's going?
What's the history of it? Why is it there, and what does it serve? Is, Imai, can you answer that, or who's the best person to answer that?
Yes, I can answer. Actually, the document you're looking at is an agreement with the neighbor who is present here today about providing a water line to the neighbor. So, it's on their property. And basically, what it states is that they basically can't be within 10 feet of the easement with their septic, which is why they kind of moved it back in the first place. And, you know, if there's any repairs or anything that needs to be done, the neighbors protect them in this.
I need to go back and ask. Okay, so the neighbor. First, let's start. This is 250, this is 251. So, you're talking.
241.
241. So, the neighbor is the one to the right.
233, yeah.
And this is, so then, 2007, two of these neighbors got together, and they made up the easement. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm hearing, yeah.
Okay. And they did it because there wasn't existing line, or somebody wanted to bring in a new line?
I'm not sure about the history unless.
Maybe they might know more about it.
Were you there?
We sued.
So, if you could just identify yourself.
I'm David Comans. This is Phyllis Comans. We live at 233. You're in this agreement. And it's our agreement. We sued the town and Quinn, who wanted to put a septic much closer to the line than that. And it would go right over our water line. So, we wanted to have the easement to keep our water away from his septic. That's the main thing. And, Phyllis?
Well, the properties were all part of the Glen House Hotel, and they said they're divided up in a funny way. And that's why our water line and gas line are on that property.
Collisions.
So, that's what happened.
Actually, our gas line went across from the hotel.
Yeah, actually, here and across. So, this grayout area was the existing gas line torn across.
Right.
So, it's now, we're now updating it to go through the easement for them over here. It's clean on this side right here.
Okay, so those are the only utilities that you guys have on their property?
The two easements. But I, my easement goes beyond that, because there's a part of it that has to do with planting and stuff that goes way to the back. So, I don't know whether that will interfere. If they're not looking at that other page on the easement, it goes beyond gas and water to, you know, a little bit wider to the back.
That was going to be the next question, is what is the actual width and length of the easement?
So, the research that was done by Mike Pimentel was not clear what that, what size that easement is at all.
What are you assuming when you do the drawing? What's an assumption you want?
Yeah, he made an assumption for sure.
Do you have a piece of paper?
No.
Can we take this? Is there a?
No, I mean.
They just have an easement.
Yeah.
Where is this, who handed this to me?
Dana.
Yep.
So can you, Dana, do you know where the easement started?
Well, so we walked through one of the previous plans and it looks like here. Shows a better line on their plan.
I see.
On the existing? So let's go back.
That's what I, I don't know what this is, anyway. It has, an existing house at 233 and the existing house at 235. I'm not sure what 241.
I think there are two that were about.
Right, so, how, do you know how this relates to that? How, Dana, how do we know how to relate this to the information on the screen?
I don't understand the other house that's there. I believe that was something that was worked out well in the past, but they have been working with the Board of Health on figuring out what the easement line is. And I don't know if you guys know exactly where you found it or?
No, we've, Mike's connected with the Board of Health a number of times and it's been a very gray area, to be frank, in what the size of that is. Because as an engineer, we wanna be precise.
Okay.
And we haven't got clarity yet.
For the utility easement or for the garden easement that she mentioned?
No, not the garden, for the utility easement. How far, you know, we know it's on this side of the property, but how far west does it go into our property? We're not 100% sure.
This agreement doesn't specify that?
There's a measurement line and the agreement says it's enough footage to get in and repair and so forth, which they would need too because.
Oh, they left it soft.
So the advice we were given was if you move 13 feet compared to where we were, which was right on the edge of where that easement was, you're in a safe zone. So per the recommendations and conversations we've had, we didn't wanna do that. We actually wanted it closer to the easement, to be frank, because we wanted to keep more trees on the property. So it was a catch 22, right? So by moving it, you know, this way a bit, we had to cut down a few more trees to put in our septic system, but also.
Let me ask a question, is the neighbor satisfied that what they're doing honors the easement agreement? Or are you concerned about?
It looks like, you know, if it's moved over, that it would work. And I just don't know what the rules are with regard to how far from a gas line a water line has to be and all that.
I don't know the engineering specs on that.
Yeah.
Well, clearly, we wanna, we will oblige with that. And ultimately, it's our goal to make sure that your, your gas and your water is, it's obviously properly taken care of in that easement. And then the landscape for buffer is, the idea is to kind of hide that as well. So that's definitely our intention.
Let me ask, Dave, do you have opinions on this? Have you read all the materials?
I mean, this whole area was kind of like, kind of haphazardly. So it's not unusual to have like an easement that runs along utilities.
And to be more loosely defined, but.
Yeah, so basically, like, it runs along. They provide, so the last time we met these folks, they had plant, their septic was closer, they had planting screeding in that area. And we weren't quite sure where the water and the gas was serving the neighbor.
Right.
Their homework was move stuff away, give a healthy amount of distance so that things can be maintained, find their water service, and then relocate the gas service into the easement. And they've done all those things.
I'm shortcutting this a little bit on a stop the conversation off. But from your, you've reviewed all this.
Yep.
And you've looked at this document.
I am, I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not gonna read like an easement document and say, but for the practical purposes.
Yeah, exactly.
Their water and their gas.
Okay.
They'll have a new gas service, their water service we maintain. And if anything ever happens to them, they'll have.
Engineering standards and all.
They'll have the room to repair them.
Okay.
And pulling the plantings out, you know, was, you know, that was a good accommodation too, you know, keep it clear.
But what was the garden easement that you brought up now that we're into it?
I've been here 55 years and then 55 years, I haven't been, five years where it's been maintained. So when we got the easement, it was extended, it looked like the property line was where we were still gardening. And so that was part of, you know, because nobody knew. And so for 40 years, I've been, you know, cleaning and working on that.
I see.
Property that became it.
You just take it upon yourself, you're saying to go.
Yeah, and it was part of the, you know, the condition when we reached the settlement.
Which, what was part of the condition? That you would garden it?
That we were.
You'd have rights to garden it?
To have access to that easement land and garden it and maintain it.
Okay. And that still applies, so.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Can I go back? So what, what distance off the property line is the edge of the easement in your assumptions?
On what they show here.
Well, let them answer that.
It is not.
No, what are your assumptions? What is your farthest line into the property?
We have.
And you're gonna trench it to a couple feet after that, so that should be your easement lines.
Right.
It's this guy here, so it's 20 feet.
20 feet is far outside.
Yes, there's a dimension here of 20 feet to the arc cable telephone line here.
Okay, and that I assume doesn't have to get done very deep?
No.
So you're, and what's your next line over to the right?
The gas line.
17, yeah, so it's about 16. Our gas line is 16 feet and theirs is obviously closest to the property line here, which looks like it's at around 10 feet or so.
Correct.
So you have six feet center line between those two gas lines?
Correct. What you have here is, this is, this is, five feet, five feet, yeah.
Okay, are you assuming the easement puts your, your line on your land and their line on the easement? Is that the assumption?
Well, I guess they have the right to have the gas line on our property.
Right, but I was just.
It's 241. So basically, what we do is we provide a five foot separation from our gas line to their gas line to allow them, if they ever needed to upgrade or do whatever they need to do.
You're assuming right now that the property line, the easement, is about 15 feet off the property line to the left?
Well, our gas line is 15 feet off, so.
Okay, so call it two and a half, so.
12 feet, say, or whatever, yeah.
That's your working premise?
Right, we just provided, provided sort of five feet, sort of distances between utilities to allow.
So I guess the question is, I don't know, you said you were also talking to the health department about this? Or you said you were in conversation with somebody else in town?
Mike Pimentel is. I mean, we can find out specifically who he spoke to, but you started, I talked to him this morning and I asked him this very question because I knew it would come up naturally.
I think it's just important that, you know, it's a working premise, this is what it is. You go through this with, you know, these people, make sure it's there, they understand stake and whatever, make sure everybody agrees. And whether you have to bring in lawyers, that's, you know, that's your call. So before, all your septic were far to the right?
Correct. Correct, the septic system is 35 feet from the property line.
Yeah. Can I, I'm gonna go off on another topic with somebody else answered.
Go ahead.
It seems like the septic fields are terraced in a rather.
Let's just ask clarifying questions right now.
Okay, all right. The septic fields that are, that are current don't seem to really match the size of your reserve area.
I guess that, that could be a field, for instance, 23, based on Title V. What you need to do is you need to provide an area substantial, or the same size as, or to meet the terrace area that you see here is due probably, not probably, but it is due to the grading, as you see there.
So could you do a smaller area and cut down less trees?
Could we do a smaller area?
If that's the reserve area is as big as you can get, and you see the other one terraced, you can't put in trees, so if you combined it, you'd get more trees in there.
Yeah, the reserve area is not gonna be touched. That's to show that in the future.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, I'm sorry, I don't mean.
So you want this to be over here, in other words?
I'm just saying that right now, your three, your three banks are taking up yay amount. And if you can compress them, that means you can save more trees or plant more trees. So if you can compress them to the same size as the reserve area, then your impact on a naked slope is going to be reduced.
That reserve, those reserve areas get shown. We'll help respect to topography.
Correct, or cutting down trees or, so we wouldn't want, we don't wanna use that personally, but.
No, that's not, that's not my point.
Right, so what we did is though we used, we did the least minimization, if you will, in the design that we did. If we put this reserve area over here, you're cutting down a lot more. We're, you're impacting the area more than what we currently have.
So I'm obviously, do you understand what I'm talking about or can I try again?
Yes.
No, I understand.
For now, I'd just like you to make sure you understand his thinking and then I'd like to hear from everyone.
Okay.
And then come back to try to resolve issues or improve the design. Get thoughts.
Are you, what's your setback on the left up there? I see a retaining wall that's close to the water line there. Beige, beige.
It's 30 feet, six inches to the corner of the house.
No, I see a large beige.
This is a five and a half foot retaining wall max.
And is that, what problem, how close is that to the property line?
I can't read that.
12 feet, there's no dimension on that.
And what's the setback required?
More than that?
Yeah.
But which way is it facing? Doesn't matter, it's totally, it's a perfect class and I see one bound. They can't have it in there. Can't have it as a setback.
Yeah, I see that for some reason, maybe if we let it drop down the height of the whole house.
That's that back corner, that wall you put around, we had to take it out. Five and a half foot height max. Right, 54. Is it five and a half foot height, right?
That's what it said?
Yeah, it says right there, five and a half foot height max retaining wall. I mean, again, I'm trying to, so much going on.
Bob?
I have no interest in the project, but just in terms of clarification, if bylaw defines a structure, a retaining wall is a structure only when it retains fill. If that retaining wall is in a cut condition, meaning they're excavating it out so it retains the earth behind the cut, it's not considered a structure and it can be taller.
You mean if it's facing a property versus facing the outside?
I thought it was three and a half feet period, but, but, you know, let's take a look.
And it's actually free thing about three.
Okay. Do you disagree with what he's saying or that could be true?
Well, I mean, I can see how that's, or reading of it, it's three feet of unbalanced fill. So it's, if you take fill to literally mean, yes, it's, you've put earth there to hold something up, then yes.
I think we just need to take a look.
John Field has ruled on that a number of times.
Can we do it again?
The idea behind that is if we can do up to five and a half feet, but we don't necessarily need to do five and a half feet. So when I walk that site, could it be three feet holding back potentially?
You could fix that potentially.
Yes, correct.
Great, all right.
And still have it, the house down?
Yeah, yeah.
The same way you bet.
Okay, so it's still a rich height, is what I really want.
Yeah.
So zoning files says a retaining wall constructed of any material shall be considered a structure if it is 36 inches or more above existing natural grade.
So 36 inches it is?
Yeah.
So that means it's a structure.
Well, if it's not, if it's not above 36.
But I thought you said it's five and a half feet.
It said max on here, doesn't mean it's going to be.
It's a word that was above existing natural grade.
Speak to Rob DiPeretto, it's a cut.
Yes.
Cut retaining, cut retaining walls, he doesn't. If we said we were gonna look at that, so.
We're not bringing in fill, but it is a cut on the side.
Take a look.
I have recalled that the direction of faces is a major issue too. That's what John has ruled in the past.
Good. Not to the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Right, so it's not.
But we'll see.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, see? You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay, so number one, I've, I've logged you and looking on the site because it certainly is challenging. It's been sitting there forever and I know the neighbors would very much like to have the rodents and the invasives and everything else cleaned up on this. And I think it's great that it is not going to loom large over the whole neighborhood and that you've made a real effort to make that driveway almost like you could turn in if you were heading to Wellesley, almost, almost.
That's a few words.
When we went there for the site visit, you'd literally have to go down, find a place, turn around and then come back and shoot up that driveway because it's a very steep angle. And, but the things I wanted to know were, okay, and so that's just a little additional infiltration up at the driveway just to, as belting suspenders, to make sure you decrease all the runoff onto Glen Road, because that was an issue for this neighborhood.
That's correct.
Glen Road is a, is a slick mess in the way the wind freezes, so.
And I was amazed at how substantially better it made the conditions. It's already better than what we're doing. A 26% to 47% is not insignificant in my mind. So I think it's worth putting it there.
Okay, and so talking about runoff, let's talk about a sprinkler system.
Terrence, are you wanting a sprinkler? Terrence is the client, are you?
Yeah, we'll have a sprinkler system.
Okay, well, you realize that if you have a sprinkler system, we have a.
A well requirement.
A well requirement, yeah, so you'll have to have a single well. We're not, yeah.
Yeah, we do have, you did put a well.
You did put, okay, so that's all it's asking. Okay, so you've already taken care of that. And then the lumen counts nice and low. Those are California, whatever California is.
Dark sky.
Yeah, but it's not just dark sky. You know how California goes over and above everything else in terms of, and they're, they meet that code. What is that code?
Title 24.
Is it Title 24? Okay.
That's correct.
Very good, because that does have the ability to kind of cast a lot of light up there. And wonderful about doing the cut to drop the height to 28.6.
Thank you.
It's a rich height. And I think they've tried very hard to look for the neighbors. At least that's my impression. So that's all I have.
I do have a question. So are there two existing structures on the side? And it looks like there were two sides.
There's an existing, yeah, the, the existing home is right here, okay? And then there's a little foundation that's left over. I mean, the house itself is gone except for a piece of the foundation here.
But there was two sites that were combined into one?
Yes, many years ago, right?
Nelson Stine?
Mm-hmm.
You're from neighbors, residents, yep? How you identify yourself in your address?
Yes, I'm David Perko, I live at 244 Glen Road, just downhill, exactly across Glen Road from this site. My, my question is around capturing runoff from the driveway. You're widening it and what provision is there to capture water as it comes down the driveway? Because it's a significantly long driveway and Glen Road can be very, can, pools a lot of water as it goes down the road there.
Sure. So at the sidewalk, you had that similar question?
I was not at the sidewalk, unfortunately.
Someone, someone was across the street there.
So we asked them to put the, on the apron at the top, that trench to pick up any.
The apron at the top.
Why don't you point at what he's talking about?
Right here.
But, but there's a lot of water that comes down the driveway and will come onto.
So in the, in the developed condition, there'll be less water coming down the driveway because the water at the top that currently comes down the driveway will be intercepted by the trench and by the, by the infiltration system along that goes up the house.
Why don't you point at as he talks?
No, I don't, can you? Talking about.
You got it?
Yes, but there's, the, first of all, what's the grade on the, on the driveway?
The grade is almost gonna be maintained to.
He's concerned about the final stretch of the driveway.
That's right.
Right, you have water coming straight, you don't like a slide.
But the overall amount of water coming down to Glen Road is being greatly reduced. Now, there'll be water still coming down the driveway, but not as much water coming down the driveway.
Why can't there be a grade to catch the water?
Because there's nowhere for them to put it, because it's at the bottom of their property. So if they were to capture something, it's all ledge down there, they would have no place to send that water to.
Except to my property.
But you don't want it on your property.
I don't want it on my property.
Yes, and the good news that I think you're missing here is that I can give you these, and you take pictures of them factually, based on what we're doing with the site, it's, the mitigation of the water is much better, based on the homework we've done, and you just, you look at the math, it just is better with what we're doing.
You can look at the math.
By percentages.
I can, I watch the water run down, and because the grade is so steep, the water comes across the road, and I've seen the water come across the road. The other question I have is, is that grade is very steep. In the wintertime, I have seen snow plows that can't get up that, right? And so where are they gonna put the snow? Because you know what I've seen them do? I've seen them put it across the road onto my property where I don't want it.
Sure.
I have a retaining wall that is buckling because of water, so this is a very significant issue for me.
Sure.
And I would ask one last thing, is because I've seen the trouble, especially in the wintertime, I question whether you've looked at using Glen House Way as access. You would reduce the runoff to Glen Road, which is already quite a river when it rains, and you would, you wouldn't have to catch water that you can't apparently catch.
Yeah, again, our answer, and I appreciate where you're coming from, and I don't want anyone plowing our snow onto your property either, and so the idea behind the design was to do exactly what we stated, is to reduce the runoff of the water, and we promise you that's the case, so I don't know what to say beyond that.
Where are they gonna put the snow?
Well, remember, so let me, just to recap what you see out there, see this line here, right here, there, that little turnaround right here, and then down all the way, this huge curb cut here, right? All the way, that's the existing driveway. Okay, so this cyan is proposed, so as you can see, the curb cut is smaller, however, it has a little bit more turning radius, as you can see, coming onto Glen Road. So if you're a plow driver, you really only had this little area here, and you really had no place to put the snow, if you can imagine, this twelve foot, and this is your turnaround if you're there. This is the new turnaround now, so in with an infiltration trench now, up here for this paved area, in addition to the drainage now, which is this, this area here now, is subsurface infiltration for the development that you see right here. So it currently doesn't have this ten, five hundred gallon chambers with stone around it, and if you look at the pavement, this pavement here, this is the exist, this is proposed, as you can see, we're actually proposing less pavement than currently exists at that lower threshold, based on the calculations, because what we're tasked with is designing to Glen Road, which is our design point, we're tasked with the peak rate of runoff and volume runoff, we have to achieve as if it is, which you don't want it to be, or less. We've actually decreased on a two-year storm event, which is three point four inches in a twenty-four hour period, it's point zero five acre-feet of water that comes down to Glen Road. Under our design, under what you currently see here, it's point zero three. So we've almost cut that in half, based on what we've designed. On a twenty-five year storm, it's actually point zero, point two acre-feet of water, we're at point one five. So we're decreasing the volume of runoff, the peak rate of runoff is, which doesn't concern you as much, but that's more for erosion control, but, so the peak rate of runoff for a twenty-five year storm event is two point seven five cubic feet per second, and we're at two cubic feet per second, under the proposed conditions. So basically, what we've done is, we've actually not only decreased the rate of runoff, but we've decreased the volume by almost as, by fifty percent almost on a two-year storm, and the runoff on a thirty-seven, but on a, it's almost, you know, it's decreased from point two to point one five.
I don't think we can force them to improve the existing conditions of the runoff, is that true?
No, they have to.
We have to.
Or they can make it worse than it is. They've made it better, but can you do even more, is the question, just for the sake of.
Can we make it better along the.
Is there anything else that you can do that you haven't done? Let me just let him answer, okay?
Is there potentially?
Can you install a pump, Dave? You said, oh, where would the water go? Could they put a pump in?
Pumps don't work. Fairly extraordinary. If they were to put an infiltration site, a trench along the downslope side of the driveway, you'd start to be trading off trees, so.
You'd have to put the water somewhere.
Well, I mean, they'd have to be clearing out, clearing out more vegetation to do it.
Right.
Can you make the driveway permeable?
Good answer.
They do other places.
Does that work in the winter, I guess?
It works in the other places apparently.
Does it work if it's on ledge?
It doesn't really work if it's on ledge.
But how much ledge is there?
There's a significant amount of ledge on this property.
It's a pretty significant reduction for the two-year storm, which is what we use as like a day-to-day basis. I mean, usually it's a, I request like a ten percent reduction, so that we don't have like a wrestling match about like every finer detail, this, we're looking at about, you know, a forty percent reduction.
Right.
Yeah, under the proposed conditions, this is almost from what you said.
Forty percent is better than it is today.
That's correct.
So something else would add another twenty percent, right, okay, go.
And the DPD doesn't give you a recommendation regarding snow plowing.
So where are you gonna put the snow?
Well, like I said before, so the existing conditions.
So you're saying he's got, it's handier to leave snow upstairs, basically.
Well, what I'm saying, right, look at this, this is your landing area proposed, this is your existing landing area, so if you're driving a plow truck twelve feet wide with this little turnaround here, you have no way to put the snow, of course you're gonna go.
Right, but where are you dumping it right now? You dumping it down that hammerhead?
Of course you're gonna, yeah, I mean, you have this little spot here, or.
No, but you're pushing the snow up, I mean, the hammerhead and the ledge, which you're no longer using, that sort of portion, that's gone now.
So now you're gonna plow.
So you're gonna have to some of.
Up here, and you're gonna put it up in here.
In front of.
Well, look at this large parking area now at the top of the slope, whereas, now you have no, if you were a plow, if you were in a plow truck and you were trying to plow this driveway. You're gonna put it, you're gonna stockpile it in this area.
Okay, so that's his answer, you're gonna put it upstairs. Okay, next question.
Okay, I had one other question that's not answered, had you considered using Glen House Way and avoid this issue altogether?
We felt like the keep giving a nod to the existing driveway location was the best route up to the new property.
But you would, you would reduce.
We believe this is, I'm answering your question, this is the, we felt like the best location for the driveway in relationship to all the tree removal and everything else, keeping it right where it is.
So you could, you could plant a whole bunch of trees on that blacktop and reduce the impervious surface by a lot if you came in from Glen House Way?
Again, this is, we felt like the best solution.
Yeah, where's Glen?
We looked at another option, this was the best one.
But you're still gonna have this runoff, you're at, you're still, you're still at the top of the slope.
That runoff is fine, but you're not catching any runoff, you're not catching any runoff from the rest of the leg of the driveway. You're not catching any?
I think they answered it with a forty percent reduction, I think you gotta be satisfied.
It's gonna be better than.
Well, I'd actually follow up the question, and it's Jeff David at two forty-six Glen Road, so the runoff doesn't really impact my property.
Yes.
Higher than Mr. Perko, but could there be a permanent berm across the street, so if the water comes off the driveway, gets caught by the berm, it just runs it down to the sewer down along the hill?
Yeah, that's not a planning board issue.
Just.
It's off this property.
Well, that would be quite, is there existing drainage right down Glen Road, do we know? Or is it gonna be put in?
Down, I think it's at the town lot.
They've been trying for years.
So it's probably well, it's not ours?
Slowly improved Glen Road.
Well, in our town, there is a permanent berm that comes up the hill, but stops before his property, I don't know why it stops, but it just stops, and if it kept going, it would solve a big, it might solve a problem, so it's a town question, not a development question, but. I don't know what stops for a property with us.
Another question, comment?
Yeah, I'm David Commons, next door at two thirty-three. I see where you have eight-foot second floor, nine-foot first floor, and ten-foot basement. We are on ledge. If the basement were eight feet instead of ten feet, that would be one-fifth of the blasting, to have a basement that is still usable, because it's the same as your second floor. The last time that there was blasting, fortunately, we escaped, but Perko's across the street got problems with.
From Glen House Way when they blasted up, but we're on the same ledge, I have no basement pretty much, it's the same ledges on that property.
So what's the question?
The question is, can the blasting be kept at a minimum, because our house was built in two thousand nineteen-ten, and it's, it's not steel, it's just rock on rock with a little mortar holding them together, and all you need is a little shaking and our house will come down.
So it sounds like a reasonable concern, can you guys address that?
Had you planned on it? I mean, that's a whole part of a separate, that's a big decision.
Yeah, I mean, it's a legitimate question, I mean, ultimately, could it be nine feet instead of ten, potentially, I mean, we could run into significant ledge, right now, we're surmising exactly what's underneath that location, we feel like there is gonna be some ledge to deal with, and, you know, we're gonna remove it, you know, with the appropriate ways that you can remove ledge, bottom line.
Have you done any, any, do you want to find out where it is? Or any subsurface?
No.
But I think the question was, can you reduce the height of the basement?
Yeah, that's a real potential, if we run into a lot of ledge, we may have no choice, but to do.
But can you explain why, I mean, typically, the basement does not have the highest floor to floor in the house, why?
Yeah, part of that is our clients really wanna have, actually, there's some reduction in heights already, they wanted to have a ten-foot first floor, I, we reduced it to nine, the second from nine to eight, partly because I wanted to make sure our home, the overall average height, was in keeping with the neighborhood, and so there's a lot of subsurface activity that our clients ultimately have, from media rooms to a gym, when you're in a gym, you wanna have height beyond the feet.
So if you subtract it from the basement, you couldn't add to the other floors, that wouldn't fit? And retain the same height, overall height?
Well, we're, we could technically go higher, based on the thirty-seven foot height we're allowed, but I, again, we're trying to be respectful to what's in the neighborhood.
It's a problematic issue, you can't put, I mean, you probably don't wanna have the gym on the first floor.
Yeah, right.
Or the underground, give her.
Which is the entrance would change, right? So is that realistic to say? Cut one from the basement and add the other foot to whatever floor you prefer?
We may not, we may just keep it at the nine-foot first floor, based on my kitchen design and crown moldings and millwork, there's a lot.
I'm a little confused about when you would make that decision, do you make that decision upfront, or you're saying you're right in the middle of blasting and making that decision?
You haven't removed the old house yet, the derelict house, right, so they really haven't gotten into.
Did you come back before us and ask for such a change? Do you wanna condition it at the lower height, and if you don't have problems, increase it?
I think utilities, right, I mean, basically too, I mean, you have the utilities for your first floor, the HVC, and you see, that higher ceiling height allows you to have head height.
So I had him, he was willing to consider one less foot, so let's do.
You were?
I don't wanna go there.
I'm looking at my client as well, he's giving me a public face.
My experience, I have experienced blasting, and blasting has come a long way.
I'm sorry, you need to identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Terrance Sweetbough, I have a problem.
Okay, great.
I have experience on other job sites of blasting over the, over the recent years, and blasting has come a long way from where it was, even twenty years ago. Much, it's very efficient, they take all kinds of.
So I guess the question to you is, are you willing to consider the one foot less?
In the basement?
I would consider it, but like, as we mentioned before, I think we've been kinda prohibited from doing anything on the site, or wanting to do anything on the site, in respect to the town.
So the answer is maybe, or yes?
The answer is maybe, depending on what we find there, I think it would be a call that we'd make as we're going, if we hit solid ledge all the way down, we'll just try to do the.
Okay, so that's an option for us to consider, we'll discuss it, okay, great, thanks, appreciate that. Okay, Steve, where were we, where were the audience?
I have a question about moving the air conditioning from the side, you know, our bedroom, we have no air conditioning, we put it where the generator is, so that we don't get that noise.
Yeah.
Because.
So was that, is that an option?
Yeah, so when we, when we walk the site together, one of the things that we talked about that we were gonna do that would help tremendously.
Can you point to the?
Sure. If you go to the landscape, no, here's fine, keep it right here, so this is the AC unit, you know, we're gonna put a buffer here.
But that's fine.
Just plantings, I understand, you know, so.
But why, why, why you just, are you, is it realistic to change it to the other side? That?
Yeah, I mean, if it works, I think to move the AC condensers here, you know, I'm open to that myself, but.
Yeah, once we had parked, we had, you had requested, when we were on your driveway, you had requested us to move the generators to that, to the other side, which we did, right? The AC units, we intend to screen and even possibly put some stowed fence, I think.
Okay, there is a requirement, of course, Steve reminds me, that it be below forty decibels at the property line, which is.
And windows open in the summer, you're gonna hear it.
You're gonna hear it.
Right, you're gonna hear it, but it's still at forty, I just, I wanna allay some of your fears there, but if you're, if, by the way, what about the other neighbor, if you move the air conditioning over there?
Exactly.
So I'm, it's not really fair.
Acoustical fence.
Well, but the other neighbor may have air conditioning, so their windows.
Oh, you don't have air conditioning?
Yeah, it's too old.
And the other thing is, a generator only runs every so often, an air conditioner runs.
That's fair, that's fair.
And it's very, very, so an acoustical fence is the only, is really the only acoustical button that's gonna do any good.
Yeah, so that would.
Willing to wrap it, oh, they're willing to wrap it in an acoustical fence.
If you cannot move it, it would be great if you can put it up fence around it.
Well, where did you land on moving it or not?
Well, we moved, the generator was over here too, so we moved the generator right here, behind the garage, so that's there with the fence around it.
Oh, there's already a fence.
Around the generator, over the AC units, we just had the screening around it over here, because the decibel is lower, the generator is louder.
Yeah, but it's very rarely, yeah.
Understood, so we need to do a fence around it, we certainly can.
So you're willing to move the AC over?
I prefer to actually put the fence around it.
You prefer to keep it there and wrap it in acoustical, yeah, that's, okay, got it. Any other questions from the audience?
For what it's worth, on that note, you know, in the conversations we had this summer, we went with the direction based on conversations to just screen it, now we're hearing something new tonight, but we're happy to do the.
Right, I think what I'd heard from the neighbor was, and I think there might have been some miscommunication, because I thought what you just said was, you asked them to move the AC and the generator over, so that's.
Fair enough. Why did you move one and not the other, I'm curious, why is it hard to move the air conditioning over there?
It's not hard, I think it's a matter of having respect to both neighbors, we're trying to have, you have a generator one side, you know.
But the, but the neighbors have a big garage blocking, they're.
Yeah, this, I think there are porches basically looking out.
Yeah, it's like fifty feet.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
The neighbors are totally blocked.
So I'll throw this out here, if that is an issue in getting approved, the AC is behind the garage.
You're making a list of things for us to wrap up with, that'll be one.
One other question, again, can you go backwards?
Yeah. I wanted to clear all the neighbor comments, and then we'll come back to it. Okay, that's very.
Just to respect the easement of the gardening thing, if you discuss that with me before you plant in that easement area.
Yeah. I'm under the impression you're quite the gardener, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, now back to us, Leslie.
Sorry, can you go back to the landscape plan for a minute? With the patio?
I'll be back.
Right, the patio, which wants to be the main outdoor player, or, yeah, it's gonna be right across from the Phyllis and David, right here, I don't know where their living area is, but.
Right there.
Yeah, but I don't know what you have for lights and screening and.
Yeah, the lighting on the patio here is basically, if we go to the elevations.
There were some, yeah, I saw some.
There's some wall sconces there, and that's it.
I guess the only thing, I'm just saying, and also, when I got to the elevation, yeah, sorry, go back to the trees?
Right there, right here, there's a wall sconce.
I'm just talking about acoustical and sort of people separation, can you go back to the section?
Yes.
For the plants, you're going.
The section, right here?
Use, the one at the top there, so the house is to the right.
Yeah, the house is to the right.
Right over there, you can't quite see it, right? I guess I was there.
Oh, there you go, you can see it, there you go, it's right there.
Between the existing tree, that little guy, between all the, the firs?
Point to this one?
Well, all those conifers are their final, is that the height you're putting them in at, twenty feet?
No.
Or that's what they're gonna grow though?
That's correct, we were asked to show them that then.
So how high are they gonna be right now between your neighbors and you?
Twelve feet.
And how is high is that only? That's about the bottom of, somebody put.
What does that sound, is that about twelve feet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're around fifteen feet right there.
Okay, I just, I'm wondering if there's enough screening there myself, and, because it's gonna.
I realize I missed a step. Tim, let's hear your thoughts on the whole thing.
Can you go back to the plan? So we worked quite a bit together on this plan, and thought that the buffer between the two houses should be the most solid, which is why he has the twelve to fourteen's versus the ten to twelve's over there, and a good mix of understory and evergreen. The one comment that I did have, based on the latest plan that I got yesterday, is to naturalize the shrubs to the right of the septic, because even though there's no house there, that's primarily where the butter's garden is, we wanted to add in more shrubs there, and my comment was that it's a solid line right now, and just to try to make it And my comment was that it's a solid line right now, and just to try to make it a little bit more natural. And he's done that, you just don't have the most updated plan right now.
We have it, well, that's here, right, in here?
We do, yeah.
You, we have it here?
I've seen it, and I think it looks fine.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Look at it too. But in my opinion, the house-to-house buffer is, is, is good.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, what are those little things?
Those are, those are roadies and byrds, which will max out over ten feet tall.
Roadies and byrds, okay.
Yeah, so you won't, you won't see anything when you're standing in your garden. That was the intent there.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah.
Any, your thoughts on the?
How the storm kinda goes, they've, they've done everything with that.
Okay. Great, septic, fine?
Again, did what they were asking, they pushed it away.
Leslie had a question, I think, is can you consolidate some of the equipment on the right-hand side and save some trees?
The trenches?
Yeah. They seem pretty wide apart. And I'm also wondering whether or not we can make the slope less uniform, again, naturalize it a bit.
The, the grading's gonna be dictated by the trenches, so it's, you know, by spreading it out, you actually kind of like can have some variety in there. If you push them all together, it's gonna be like a steady slope across.
Right.
I mean, I, I think, you're not gonna be able to push them enough together to make it any substantial difference.
Right, okay. Good.
Well, can, but, but you can, you can naturalize it, so that regimented slope.
I mean, what we've done before, we've, we asked like the landscape architect to like, um, soften the grating, but I'm not sure this one can be softened.
They can take a try.
Yeah.
Can they be more V-shaped than rectangular? Can they have a kink in the middle?
The, the trenches?
A little bit of an angle, to make less.
So it's a little more natural, or?
I, I mean, really, it just, I'd wanna kind of keep the drum here, the trenches fairly straight, and not, not reinvent the wheel here. You know, if you wanna naturalize it, you know, let's plant high grasses over there or something like that. No one will even see the contours, no one even notice it, like, you know, like, I, I'd rather not kind of monkey around with the, the trenches to, to the issue of failure.
The only one that's gonna see it is the homeowner.
Okay. You guys ready to conclude on some matters here?
Do I?
Yeah, yes, I just wanna make sure that the whole retaining wall issue is clarified, because I looked at the zoning, and I'm sure there's someplace where perhaps it talks about the difference between whether it's cut or filled, but it's not in the zoning bylaw.
I recall pretty clearly, it has a lot to do with the direction, the retaining wall faces.
Well, it's not the direction.
The retaining wall faces inside.
It's, it's the definition where it says thirty-six inches above exact existing natural grade. So just like when you build a house and you measure the height of a house from, from existing natural grade.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I'll just, we'll turn to Imei, just settle that. Is that okay? And Rob, his, your input, that would be great. John Field, I think, would be the pilot.
Yeah, we'll just go to John.
So we're missing John at this point. So, but you can, if it needs to be adjusted to three feet or less, you can do that.
Yes.
So it's not an issue, okay?
Yeah, we're cut, basically we're cutting into the slope to do that retaining, so, as you were saying, existing.
So I think for me, the one issue that remains is the AC location. And given your explanation that you divided them in order to compare it to the neighbors, I would suggest that you move the AC to the other place and move the generator near them, because the generator barely, rarely goes on, like Steve says.
Fair enough.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
And is that acceptable? So that makes your summers better, is what you wanted, okay?
When it goes on, it goes on the bank.
And then, but, are they both wrapped then, are we saying?
Yeah, for sure, the generator needs to be wrapped.
Okay, the generator will be wrapped, okay.
Yeah.
And then where did we land on the foot off the basement? You said you're willing?
We're willing, correct.
Okay, so if we just, I'm trying to be realistic here, help me. What if we, you know, we condition it to one foot less, and then if you find that it's no problem to add to one foot, you're not gonna do a little demolition, then we'd be open to expanding it.
Yeah, fair enough.
Is that realistic to do?
It's, I think.
Is that crazy?
That's, that's at least where you wanna start, because you don't wanna start with, with ten and have some kind of criteria to, to drive back, because you're not gonna be able to test that.
We'll start with nine, and it can be expanded to ten, and I don't know how to write the conditions.
So what, what is.
So once we cover the existing house and we're digging, we're gonna find pretty quickly what we're dealing with.
So you wanna come back to it very quickly?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you'll be, you'll be there with the switch in your hand.
The other thing is, the easement definitely, I don't know.
I think that, are we clear on the easement stuff? I think you need some clarification on the easement, and.
Take our assumption at least.
The agreement, we need to have surety that the agreement's being followed.
Okay.
Is that fair? And I, how do, how do you wanna do that, Imei?
I mean, if we wanna take it to the highest level, we'd have it reviewed by our, by our council, yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
And I mean, that's.
Then it's done.
That makes me feel good.
Okay. We also do have conditions for blasting too. We have our standard notifications for, they have to.
Fire department, the whole nine yards.
Yeah.
But they also have to do a.
They have to know by beyond.
Quality of your, and the condition of your house.
We're having Imei contact DPW to see what we can do about that more permanently, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, just one other comment, if you go back to the.
Okay, we're almost done.
Tree basins.
Okay.
If, if you had, if you had your, if you had, what did you call that J-shaped piece?
At the bottom?
At the bottom of the driveway.
You go, yeah, you just point.
You have basins here to catch water, but if you have this kind of thing here that goes right down to there, and then you've cut off most.
Dave watching into that?
You could, you would just lose more trees.
Yeah, it's a matter of the landscaping issue.
But you can plant more trees after.
It's a balance.
The, the trees that are there are pretty terrible anyway.
Kim?
She's outside.
Gone.
No, she's outside too.
Okay.
She's right there.
Kim, the question came up, tell us about the quality of the trees to the right of the driveway.
Right, if they add more drainage there, we lose more trees, so just.
Is that, is that a major?
More drainage of, of existing.
Well, from the beginning, we advised them to stay out of that area, because there's such a nice natural buffer there already.
Okay, gotcha.
So that's why this whole bit's really tall.
Okay. So you have, she feels differently. Okay, are we done? Anything else from you guys?
One second, comment.
Okay.
Can they have their permission to at least do some cleanup within the?
We're with her.
It's, it's got ten feet of, of invasives coming along.
Oh, it's awful.
And I just plan to.
Can who, who have permission?
A client.
What are you asking for?
If we can just clean up the site a little bit.
Permission on the planning board so they can clean up. They said they can't do anything, that you have your permission.
Give them advance approval to do some.
We haven't touched the site at all. We wanted to go in, even at the site meeting in July, and clean up all the bases.
But if, if you get a permit in a couple of weeks, when would you do it?
That, right, yeah.
Okay, great.
Well, we, we actually, we have a demo permit, and it was recommended that we don't touch the site until we go through this process.
Okay. I, I don't think we need any.
We don't have any problems with the invasions.
We don't need any special permission, yeah.
That'd be wonderful.
So they can, you're telling them they can, they're fine, move ahead.
You can clean up a bit.
Yes.
Clean it up.
And then I, I just have one, one last question really, regarding back to the easement, Imei. We, we, we've been working with the easement a lot, back and forth constantly and so forth.
But we're gonna, that easement's gonna be settled this week with Imei and council, and could you join that conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, that'll be perfect.
Just get a straight.
That'll be great, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And your willingness to work with everyone, and. Okay. A little bit long. It could have been longer.
Thank you.
All right, guys, from fifty-five, hit go. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, yes. But it was better on hotel.
It's hard to see what's happening.
I don't think I know.
I, I missed a second.
Okay, Rob, you about ready? Here, Rob, Steve gave us permission to.
I'm Rob Jethro from Metro West Engineering.
Help us catch up.
Really fast.
I'll do my best. You have to help, though, don't ask any questions.
It's like, it's like YouTube, for you, you know, YouTube, you can choose the speed, and this is like two X.
Exactly. I'll go two X. So I'll start out with the, with kind of the neighborhood where we are at fifty-five. By the way, my client's in the background here, he's Henry Arundel.
Hi, Henry.
He lives at fifteen Dogwood, and this is, he proposed me his new home. So. We start at twenty-nine rolling lane out here, that's a mixed house of, with an RGFA of about thirty-seven hundred square feet. Move on to one Dogwood, that's an RGFA of about seventy-seven hundred square feet.
Yeah, you got that. Rolling lanes up there.
Yeah, well, this is one Dogwood.
I shouldn't roll it.
That's Dogwood. This is a corner lot, so that was number one Dogwood. Sixty is located right here, that's over thirteen thousand square foot RGFA. Thirteen. Around thirteen thousand. Sixty-five hidden, this is about a three thousand square foot ranch. This is eighty-one rolling lane, that's approximately thirty-five hundred square foot home. This would be ninety-five rolling, that's about thirty-three hundred square foot home. And then one oh three.
We live there.
Thirty-three hundred is, is based on the accessories maps.
About three thousand.
He said accessories maps.
Oh, okay. Must be two hundred, we have a home.
And then finally, one oh three rolling is about a thirteen thousand square foot home. And again, these are based on the accessories maps, and they include the living area and the garage areas. I'll give you something else. So we can go to the existing conditions. So we do have columns to handle, but. This is the existing lot, it's about two acres. This lot was originally created in two thousand four on flexible subdivision plan. It's located in a, in a residence B, it's owner district, which, under base owning, we require forty thousand square foot lots and two hundred feet of frontage. But because the flexible plan was approved, the, the dimensions can be different. This shows the setbacks off the street. You'd have the standard setback off Hidden Road of forty-five feet, and then on the sidelines that abut other properties outside the subdivision, you'd have thirty-five foot setbacks. Inside the subdivision.
Fifty.
Inside the subdivision, you'll have fifteen foot setbacks. So most of the lot has been cleared through this whole zone, and this has been previously blasted, based on the last proposal, so.
What year was that?
What's that?
What year was that?
The blasting was actually done shortly after the subdivision was, was approved, so that's roughly two thousand four, two thousand five, time period. Our site topography is such that, basically, we've got a high point that runs here, this first hundred feet or so pitches back towards Hidden Road, the rest of the property pitches back, actually towards the abutting lot in our, in our subdivision, and then ultimately towards Meadowport, out from Gulfport. And about one half acre pitches towards Hidden Road, the other acre and a half pitches towards the front. Soil conditions, as, as you might guess, are largely dictated by shallow surface ledge. Probably the only place we had good soils naturally occurring was in this location, over in this spot here, and those were, were good altering soils. And this whole area's been blasted out to, to a depth of approximately twelve feet below the existing grade.
So these, sorry, these contractions do not reflect that?
No, it.
Your current.
They do, okay.
It was blasted and then filled back in.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, but all's been filled in, so it's leveled off, as you have noted on the site block.
I wasn't there, sorry.
If we can go to the proposed condition plan there, and I do have moments colored up.
See if it's an L trap feeling, a second.
I reckon the teaser and boards are that though. Well, I can work off this, it's just not as clear to see. This, actually, why don't we go to the proposed plan, this is the staging plan. So this is the proposed home, again, that's located in an area that's, that's basically been blasted out. The driveway comes in off Hidden Road, that driveway is essentially there, right now, that's the existing curb cut. This is where the driveway is. Turn around here, garage is here, no significant parking court. Driveway has been adjusted to a fourteen foot width coming in, and then we've made some adjustments in this in working with the fire department to make sure that we've got adequate access for the emergency equipment. House has a footprint of about thirty-eight hundred square feet. There's a lap pool in this area, and a proposed greenhouse in this location. Drainage for the site, all the roof will be collected from, from the building, and we've got an infiltration system in this location. As I said previously, about the first hundred feet of the driveway pitches towards Hidden Road. Hidden Road is notoriously poor drainage issues on that road, so what we're doing is, we're collecting the drainage right at the mouth of the road and routing that over into an infiltration system in this location.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Our sewage disposal system is located in this location, again, those are where the only suitable soils on site for septic system are located. In terms of some of the, and in terms of drainage too, we're, we're having overall reductions in both volume and runoff, depending on which storm you look at, from anywhere between twenty percent for the larger storms and eighty percent for the smaller two-year, ten-year type storms. So we have a significant reduction in, in stormwater that will be leaving the site and going back in to recharge ground water levels. In terms of some of the, the numbers to, to take a look at, again, the house has a, has a footprint of thirty-nine eighty-three square feet. Greg will go through the, the RGFA. The average existing grade plane around the house is, is two fifty-seven point five feet, and the proposed floor, first floor is at two fifty-nine five. So the, the grading on this house works actually very nicely with the existing grades that are there. First floor is only about a foot and a half above the grade right there. In the back, even though this is dropping off, we're still within three feet of where the existing grade is, so there's not a lot of, of fill requirement going on in here in order to make the grading work. The house is thirty-one point five feet above existing grade. This has a flat roof, and Greg will go through the requirements and the profiles and the elevations for the house, but it's a relatively low profile home. I think the other thing that I would like to touch on, and I'm gonna pull out a plan that's colored, because it's more illustrative. This plan. We touched base on this point. We have a double hearing going on tonight, one for a subdivision modification, and one for the RGFA hearing, so, which is what I was doing right now. You guys are on as a board. I assume it'll open up public hearings. Well, but you have to open up the hearings. Well, you assumed you opened up both hearing simultaneously.
Well, no, we didn't say both hearings simultaneously, but it's the site plan approval of flexible subdivision, so listen to them as one thing as we popularize them.
So it's assumed to be both?
So it's assumed we both.
Yeah.
Well, the other used to be forty-five, now it's, you know, it's formerly zero.
It was formerly zero.
And now it's gone to four.
Yeah.
So-
Yellow's not zero.
Right.
Oh, you're talking about the other development, zero hidden.
Fifty-five hidden and then zero-
No, no, no.
Are you saying that two hearings with respect to this property?
Yes, yeah. Because part of this process for this lot, and I believe maybe for the next hearing, I have to, is a request to modify the limit of work that was approved on the flexible subdivision plan, which requires, you know, the subdivision here in addition to the-
I understand, I understand.
So-
Can you put some more light on this, from the top, or is that it?
Really, no, because everything else points at the wall.
All right, well, then, move it more into the light if you don't mind, or I'll just have it-
Wherever you can.
There you go. That's it, that's it, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, great.
Because I can tell there's a lot of detail and I can't see it.
Well, there's two colors that are, again, I apologize if I'm doing me in someone's way, I don't think I can, well, there's two colors that are important. The yellow-
It's a yellow.
Is the, is the limit of work that was approved.
Yellow dotted line?
Yep, the yellow dotted dash line. That was a limit of work that was approved on the original subdivision plan, the flex plan. And the magenta line is the limit of work that we're requesting you approve as part of the site plan approval and to modify the subdivision plan. And the reason for the, and the major deviations are in this location here, and in this location here, and a little bit right here. And then also we're pulling back the limit of work in this area down below. And the dark green indicates areas of the site that are basically have existing natural vegetation, the gray are invisible ledge, yellow crops. So, when the original subdivision plan was approved, the plan showed, had a little box there for a septic system. It didn't work when I tried to design it, you know, in terms of actually getting able to fit the septic system within the box that they provided. And this is, that limit of work reflects what we need to get the septic system in and the appropriate grading that goes with the septic system. And this is, this is basically the same location and the same limit of work that you approved on the previous RGFA proposal for this house, which actually combined both lots and had a house that was something on the order of sixteen or seventeen thousand square feet, it was a much larger project. So, you've seen this before, and you've seen this limit of work before, but at that hearing, we didn't request a subdivision amended, to be amended, even though I thought that was the way to go on this one, so that's why we're here. And then this as well, again, it's, it's to handle the drainage that would otherwise go uncollected on Hidden Road. We want to hit that even infiltration system. And we've got plans to re-landscape this, and right now everything that's in there is pretty scruffy. Going back to the septic system location, there's one nice oak tree there that's probably forty inches in diameter. And even though it's inside a limit of worth, we do plan on staging that particular oak tree. Rest of the things are not really anything significant. And then the adjustment on this edge was basically to accommodate a pool structure. And Ryan, our fancy apartment protector, on break, can go through, see, Matt Cunningham, who's talking about why that's really not all that impactful, there's not too much there in that location, and the grade drops off pretty quickly, so I don't think that's a significant impact. So that's the reason for the dual hearing, just wanted to make sure you understood.
I'm a little concerned, did you notice that hearing? I mean, a little worried.
So, it was in, it was in the public notice.
Public notice specified that we're hearing two things.
Yes.
Okay.
Public hearing noticed it.
The magenta is the proposed.
The magenta is the proposed.
And what are the little-
Okay.
Yeah. Just right here.
Yep.
Looks that and that, and why does this have to come out?
That's not coming out. What?
The magenta.
Yeah, yeah, actually, there is some work going in there for the pool and the grading. This is just, what we're doing there is just getting a foundation drain out to daylight there, so it's just a small lip there. And it's the same thing here that's just going out to get to the point where I did, this is a window well in the house, and I need to get a drain from the bottom of that window well somewhere daylight, so there's not a lot of drainage, but that's why it does, well, right there. And I'll have Ryan Womple talk about the logic behind it.
How well would you estimate sort of like the net increase in disturbance area? I mean, because you did give back a bunch, I mean, there was going to be this carrot garden down here.
Yeah, it was only a couple thousand feet of net increase in inside and developing areas.
It looks like the magenta line, other ones gave back, makes a bureau, is, is within the fifteen foot setbacks, so is that true? Has he had to-
Yes.
And then dips into that, why is he doing that? Why aren't you making fifteen foot all around?
Well, there's no requirement to put one of the, of the flex plan.
I thought you said there was a requirement for forty from the front.
Forty-five foot setback, those are the zoning setbacks, structures.
It's not, it's not.
It's not a limit of work.
Right, but is there, is there a reason you couldn't go back and give fifteen feet, there's a lot going on with both properties, yeah.
Down here, we've actually pulled it back from what was approved.
He's taking it away from other places.
Okay, let's keep going, Rob.
Uh, we sit on a roadmap. That's all I have on the site.
So what, I think it would be nice to show what you're doing to the audience, they can't see.
Yeah.
So why don't you just review quickly what you just reviewed.
Say it again.
Yeah, I did do this on this, I showed this exact board and went through this exact thing on the site block, which I think you were at. We were talking about the, the limit of work, approved is in the yellow and proposed is in the purple. So, we're proposing to adjust the limit of work.
Are you under the understanding-
No, let's, let's let, he's uninterrupted now, we made a mistake in answering questions, so, we'll come back to you and you can ask any question you want, thanks.
So, because this was approved, the yellow line was approved, on the subdivision plan, there was what's called a special permit. In order to change that, it requires planning board action, so that's why we're here and that's why we're asking that question to the board.
Okay, moving on.
I'd like to let Brian Womple or Matthew Cunningham, whoever wants to start.
As Rob mentioned, this is the site just to kind of orient to his plans. You can see the Hidden Road here, driveway here, driveway loop, garage. As you can see, the site is fairly heavily wooded outside of the limit of work line, the pre-existing limit of work line. So there's very little, if any, vegetation within that limit of work, but in the rest of the property, it's heavily wooded and at least on the side, heavily sloped right now. So we'll go to the next slide. So as Rob mentioned, we are saving a significant oak, sorry. A significant oak right here to accommodate the septic. We are removing four trees in this area, it's a combination of hickories. Hickories, there's a couple of white oaks, there's a, like throughout the site, there's ten trees in total. Four pines, two oaks, one red oak, two hickories, and then one sugar maple. So, four trees in total right here to accommodate the septic, to accommodate one of the stormwater outfalls right here, there's two. And to accommodate an outfall, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, right here, there is one, and right at the end of the pool, there is another. And then also two white pines for the stormwater infiltration system down by Hidden Road. Next. So, asphalt driveway, coming off Hidden Road, a couple of unit paver pull-ins, just parking here, and then also a unit paver backup here. The paving throughout the site is largely a granite banding, you can see it here, with a, with a deck around the pool, a wood deck around the pool, and a wood deck to the side over here, to have a sort of dining terrace. As Rob mentioned, there is a proposed greenhouse off this side with some fenced-in area and some raised vegetable beds. You can have seen that image, and we can look at a larger detail of the greenhouse shortly, but just sort of the greenhouse there. On the backside of the pool, serve as kind of this northwest side of the pool enclosure is a four and a half foot, four and a half to five feet freestanding wall, recentry wall, something of this sort here. It's a, I think, forty-five foot long pool.
Pool enclosure.
And in pool enclosure fencing, we have a couple of different types where it's visible, here and here. Got an aluminum picket, and then as it kind of goes down, downhill and into the woods a little bit, and this is all fairly invisible through the trees and much lower grade than the house, transitioning to a, to a chain link fence, like a bio chain link fence, it can just disappear. Next. One other thing we didn't mention is a sunken fire pit area right here. Planting, we are doing a significant amount of screen planting along the, kind of the edge of the septic system here to help screen any views from the rolling lane right here, as well as a decent bit of screen planting, I'll get into this with a species here in a moment. Screen planting here for the new development down here. Excuse me. And then, just working up the others. Also screen planting here to screen from the house at twenty-nine Hidden Road, which is over here. And increasing, since we're taking down a couple of the white pines down here, adding some new planting along Hidden Road. So our screen planting is a mixture of white pine and white spruce, along with a shrub layer of mulled brush bugeye, rhododendron, bayberry, witch hazel. And then there's a deciduous layer as well of, excuse me, of red maples and an understory of dogwoods and amalankier. Also a significant amount of bayberry and clapra in the kind of screen plantings along the edges.
It's a predominantly native plant palette?
I think the only non-native species we have is a viper.
Lighting?
Next, yes. So lighting, we are under the maximum. So the lighter yellow that you can see is architectural lighting, including soffit lighting cans, which is A1, let's see here, underneath the roof armpit, as well as A2, which are the, which are full cutoff sconces. Here, and on the second floor, here. Landscape lighting is fairly low-key, including just very low, simple path lighting, which is this yellow one, which also kind of connects over to the parking area here. And then a very small decktop dome, just a small two-inch dome, which is up the paving here and on the deck areas. Pool lighting, some in-wall lighting at the basement stairwells here and here. And then two full cutoff, like half dome pendant lights in the greenhouse. Since the architectural lighting, soffit can lights and the sconce, and the half dome in the greenhouse. Skip lighting, just small twenty-four inch, I think, or eighteen inch lighting, just path lighting. These are for those like those half domes that will be on the deck, and then some of the paving areas, the in-wall lights in the basement, pool light. And then, out at the end of the driveway, we'll have a small address marker with this, this light fixture, just that line up the, it'll be above the, yeah, so it's just a very small, a little brass light. Cross section, so section A, which comes up from kind of twenty-nine Hidden Road, long section through the house, then over to one oh three rolling lane. Let's see, here, so you can see the house, it's significantly higher than a lot of the surroundings. This area is heavily wooded already, as is this area. And then we are, so adding screen, new screen planting here and in this area. And then section B, which goes through ninety-five rolling lane here, is more of a cross section through the house and coming downhill through the other side of the subdivision. Let's see here, so ninety-five rolling lane here, small gully through here, and then significant drop down to the Cough Course.
The dark trees are existing trees?
The dark trees are existing trees. And this is just some photos of what we are proposing for the greenhouse. It's just a fairly simple structure, minimal lighting.
What's up, yeah, would you want to go next?
Oh, I sent those-
3D renderings?
Yes. So here's just some 3D renderings of a few views of the house. The approach of the driveway, right now it is, let's have a ledge, gully, we're going to have that as much as we can, considering the rock, ferns. Little bit further up the driveway, kind of the approach to the house. Again, we're using a lot of, we're going to be using a lot of native ground cover, a lot of basin fern, amalankier, red maple.
Satbowl serves very, I'm sorry.
Sorry, he didn't.
Yeah, no, sorry. Sometimes I say one, you know, the botanicals, it's like, right. So you can see the front door, this is kind of the drive circle, this is the guest parking area right here, the drive circle is there, and then there's the access to the garage, kind of a background there. Go to the next. So this is kind of on that paving axis through the drive loop up to the front door. And there's the access around to the garage area here. So this is the view from the kind of the bottom end of the pool, so it's a kind of infinity edge pool, just a small two-foot drop into the surrounding basin. Here's the four and a half to five foot freestanding wall on this side, wood deck, lots of native ground covers, additional vegetation through here. This is kind of a view from the southeast, here's that sunken fire pit area, pools right here with the freestanding wall, that dining deck, it's here, it's the back of the garage, small kind of living area here. Coming from the east end of the garage, garage here, drive circle here, here's the fence that's going to connect up to the house for the pool enclosure. I think that's it, and I will hand it up to Greg.
Greg LeGault, LeGault Design, excuse me, the architecture is, as you can see, a pretty modern house. Slightly pitched roofs, satisfy the definition of flat roofs for zoning purposes, so we're thirty-two feet, it's our maximum height, and we're just below that, that three and a half. It's a sixty-seven hundred square feet RGFA, it's a pretty modest size for the size of the site it has, it is, the arrangement, as you can see, you know, that the garage is setback on the far side of the house, it's really not visible from the road at all. You know, the driveway comes up over a rise, so you can't see it at all from Hidden Road. Even from Meadow Brook over the golf course, you would only see through pretty heavily- Even from Meadowbrook over the golf course, you would only see through pretty heavily wooded areas. This elevation, but you don't think you see much of that, except a glimpse of it in the winter, because it is so high too, and set back a bit from the slope. The layout is such that their, the main living spaces are on the first floor here. The master suite is here. Secondary bedrooms are over here. This is the garage, this is the back. You can go to the this is first floor. So it's set up in sort of a radial design. Really just trying to take advantage of the, of the sight and the sun, and it's essentially south facing, so the sun will travel around this path and get lots of light into the, all the living spaces, which are on the, on the south side with stair and service spaces on the north side. The materials are clapber siding, painted clapber siding.
RGFA?
Sixty-seven hundred. It's the upper, actually, if you go back to the first batch, the color. So although the white is actually clapber siding, painted white, be hardy most likely. And the gray is a larger format, some additions for, they're about one foot by three foot panels that are put on that have a a nice variation to them, so they, they look more natural. The windows will be painted black, there are little accents of copper roofing around and the undersides of the overhangs will be natural fur.
Okay, very good. Any questions from residents or comments from residents? And it would be questions or comments on both the site plan approval and the amendment to the subdivision plan, right Rob?
Correct.
Great. I just want to make sure that we're considering both of those simultaneously. Questions or concerns?
I'm Pam, twenty-nine Hidden Road. We are southeast of this, and the whole house looks like its, its main facade is facing southeast. And you're on the highest hill around us, and then it goes, slopes down, and then we're up a little bit. My concern is particularly with the, with the pool and the lighting around the pool. Are we going to, are there sufficient trees left in that vicinity, given the fact there's going to be a driveway between us and the, and the house? To protect us from all the lights of the house?
Yeah, if you go to the site plan, that's easier to see, maybe the landscape of the house. Kind of, we're that right there, so we're
See, there's a, so there's a significant amount of
Can you point where it lives?
This, this, here?
Down there.
Yeah. Right down here. So yeah, there is, well, number one, a significant slope, a significant elevation increase, and there's we're not touching, I guess, any of the existing vegetation in this area at all.
On our property?
On our property. So you can kind of see the gray dots there are the existing trees on this property. And then we're introducing additional screening of here and here. And
There's a gap so that you have the southern exposure from the pool.
Well, there's actually a pretty significant canopy that's right in front of the pool.
Yeah, there's a lot of existing trees, we didn't want to cut up new trees.
Deciduous.
Deciduous, but it's also
It's a mixture.
Will not be used in the wintertime.
There's a mixture.
Fully closed in the wintertime.
There is some existing white pines. If you scroll up to the aerial photograph. Actually, it shows up a little bit better on the aerial, the next one up. So yeah, you can see that, so the evergreens kind of show up in here, so there are existing evergreens right here. A couple of them right there.
The good news is they are commonly motivated, you don't want to see them and they don't want to see you. My thought is, they probably thought through that way. Is it just swimming here? Any? Is it Barbara?
I'm Barbara Keller, I live at ninety-five Rolling Lane in that house. And I'm really concerned about lights also.
About?
Light.
Lights.
Lights, the lights, because there is very little opportunity to screen, because the land goes downhill and then it goes up till it's my house. So anything that would be tall enough to screen would have to be enormous. And it's, it's mostly deciduous trees between me and basically the garage lights, that's what I'm really concerned about.
How high is the garage lights?
Well, they're on the house.
Yeah. What's the height of the?
So the, yeah. Those, these three?
Those are, those are set between the garage doors as opposed to over them, so they're only about seven and a half, eight feet though. And they're, they're shielded, so they only point straight down.
Right, I could see the shape.
And then they reflect on the ground, yeah.
But they, right, they're, they're not projecting the house at all.
Yeah.
Can we go to the elevations or the cross sections right quick? So here you are. So you, you're correct, that there's a, there's a gully here. We are adding significant planting, ten to twelve foot evergreens, right in this area, which it is a couple of feet down from the from the finished floor of the house, but it will be above, or very, or very close to above those lights.
Can we take a look at the facade that's facing her as a neighbor? We take a look at that.
Yeah, it's basically
It's just that one.
Yeah, the bottom one.
Because it's not just the garage.
It's the bottom right.
Yeah, it's not just the garage lights exactly, it's lights above, and the windows above.
Yeah, those, those are hallway and bathroom. So they're not, they're lights that, and small windows in the hallway. So they're, they're, you know, it's less, less windows than the other side.
But there's a big window where, must be the stairwell, that will probably be lit pretty frequently, and that's going to be a big lighted beacon.
It's, it will have downlights in it. But it's inside the house. The, the glass will
Well, it is a house, and it's going to have lights.
Right, it's going to have lights, right, right. The house is on the, the, the lights on the outside of the house here are facing directly down. These are recessed lights set up into the soffit. So they're again, just facing straight down, there's no, no projecting out.
Other questions or comments?
I just have a couple. So for the secondary drainage area, give the grading to the landscape badge, just to kind of soften that up a little bit. I don't know, it's going to see it because you're planting in front of it.
Yeah, and it's going to be, when it is planted, it's going to be naturalized, so I can maintain.
But just soften the grading on it a little bit. And then the the window well and foundation drain outfalls, can we just make like the last ten feet those perforated? And then then maybe also have a landscape badge, just come up with a little detail for a stonehead around it, there's a porch by, right?
It's just porch.
Yeah, so just, so, so no, so no, which you're not showing anyway.
We're not showing.
Or, so just more like maybe a
Like a classic, bolder-y, mossy covered?
Something they're not going to, no one's really going to see.
Right.
You know, so
Not like a whole type of whole rip off.
Yeah, and it's, it's heavily wooded, right there, where it's coming out. And we may even and that's one of those things that I want to make a field choice in terms of exactly where I bring that thing up, because you know, maybe once we're out there, we might move it five feet and actually save a tree.
Yeah, I mean, you might have, you might even be able to cut it short, depending on if it's really great.
Yeah, exactly, just one of, one of those things that should be field engineered, as it's going in.
There are all kinds of exposed ledge moments down there too, so ideally we feel that we open out.
Do a rock or do some great ground cover there, which is fairly high. High that I would think within the property line almost, without having to go outside of that, whatever the yellow dot versus the magenta line.
Yeah, those aren't drains that I expect, they're dischargeable.
No, that's why I want this, you know. And then they, they provided a construction management plan, which I just couldn't, like is fundamentally okay, there's just some other notes I'd like to add to it, that maybe they just add, kind of be a condition of signage and contact information.
I know for construction. Where are people going to park, is your question?
On our site, we put up, because the site's already cleared and, and the house relative to, clearing is relatively paused. We've got at least seventeen or eighteen onsite parking spaces, pickup sized spaces, two ten by twenties. And room for job trailer and room to store. A couple thousand yards of material everywhere, so, and we laid all that out of the plan. Because there's places like ours right now, there's a lot to locate next to.
One, one thing is, although I did not make it to this sidewalk, I made it to zero, that these two properties seem like a good construction at the same time. So I don't know from a, what the planning board and the construction management plan would be, but I think they need to be looked at together, and how that's going to work for the destruction to the neighbors, et cetera. And I think also it would be great, and I don't know how to do this, to look at the landscaping from both of them together. Because there are assumptions that are made about one property, about the other ones actually. We want to make sure that they don't, you know, cross each other out. I don't know how to make that happen, without putting the onus on one or the other, but whether they can use an overlay, we just do a, an overlay?
We'll be able to go right after this.
Right, but I mean, it would be nice to actually have a, have a composite plan, I guess is what I'm saying, if we're asking for.
That's something I, I think we can pretty easily accommodate with the other landscape. Dave, anything else?
No.
Okay, Kim?
They've responded to every comment we've had along the way, and I think it's a nice variety of names. One standard, not standard, one condition that we do time and time add to these is that the owners are contacted when some of the screening trees are placed, so that they have capability to see what's stored, who knows, that end of the site if things need to be shifted slightly, so I think that's a priority of this project.
What was your point of view on the buffering on the garage side to the neighbor and the concern about the lighting?
I thought it was that there's a combination
They had considered that, and you had considered it.
We've talked about it, like actually, so there's under story and trees going in those areas.
They'd thought about it, excuse me, at different levels.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. A question?
Sure. A little feedback, the pool in White Hidden Road. Question on the drainage outfall, that is that, you know, that water is controlled?
This one.
And then the other one too?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's a foundation drain. And from what we can see, the foundation slab is actually above water table. So we don't expect that that drain is really ever going to run. And if it does run, it'll be such a small volume, that there's enough distance between where that high, high outfall is and where the property line is, that it should be able to work itself back into the ground. And the other, the other outfall is actually just for a window well, you know, so it's something of the size of one of these tables in the front, so it's, it's just so that you don't have water trapped in the window well, so that, the amount of flow that that thing carries is, is next to zero.
It's also going to look aesthetically pleasing on that wall there.
It'll never save it, yeah.
Me and Gray reds wedding. Good.
Pool, does it really have to be forty-five feet long to get it squeezed a little bit more? I'm not quite sure why there's so much disturbance to the top of what's hidden road.
Double check, I think it was forty, I think it was forty-two. I mean, one of the reasons for the pool is laps, and that was kind of one of the
Started as a fifty foot pool, and then we already turned it down to forty-five.
Why, you were talking, I think when Rob presented, you said you were going to talk about why there's so much disturbance to the, up to the, to the other side. I mean, that's one of the places where the, where the limited warp was made larger.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, from your role. We potentially could return, we're not doing any, any major grading right here. And it's, it's a cleared area, there's no trees in that area right now. I mean, we could, as long as we, as long as we can plant outside the limit of work in order to allow for the screening, we could return this.
And that was essentially more of an augmentation area. And anything else that was up to alarming to go in and plant, because right now it's it's bittersweet and poison ivy and
Way plant.
And stuff like that.
So all you're saying is you wanted to plant there, and that's why you moved the well to
Right.
It's known as.
Yeah.
How wide is the driveway, by the way?
It's coming in from the street, it's fourteen foot wide, I tried twelve feet. I didn't get very far with stuff, she brought some.
Does the truck at any point take that as far before?
Yeah, well, the, the circle is twelve feet. So that is twelve feet, and then the rest of the, the geometry down there is dictated by being able to get the ladder truck in and turn it back around again and get back out.
Can we talk about the amendment? Can you put that drawing up?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll have to put that back on the
In the yellow color.
Actually, do you, do you mind bringing it here, so you can squint at it a little closer for a couple?
So can, can you just talk about the impact of the new area to push out?
The impact, Brian, did you say it was six trees?
It's ten in total.
Ten trees total.
Yeah, there's four trees right here, I think there's two.
Can you come and show us on this, because we're, we're kind of trying to clean this up.
Yeah, we have this is back to
Oh, sorry.
So the new is
We're pulling this out. Yeah, new is the thing, so, so we're pulling that one, so there's four trees here, two trees there.
So this seems very justified, because you're trying to save water.
We're saving, yeah.
Okay, so let's take that out, and what's the net change? Because you're gaining some and losing some. Is the net change zero? Or close to it?
Uh, just total area, I'm talking about. Oh, of course.
Yeah, total square footage included.
I have to subtract that.
But if you subtract that, then we'll, we're about to zero.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then what about trees? Are you saving any trees down here because of the change, or are we just?
We're saving that big giant oak, because that was originally inside the limit of work, so that was going to be cut, so we're saving that forty-two inch oak.
There's a larger oak, there's an evergreen right next to it, and then there's a hickory right here that we're also
How big is the one you're taking down?
Eight to twelve.
Okay. And here, you're saying you actually could pull that back in?
You can.
Yeah, as long as we can, as long as we can plant outside of it, or get some screening for the area.
And especially after describing what's coming to that outfall, you shouldn't even
Oh, yeah.
Don't need those if that changes.
Right, I just wanted to make it transparent.
Okay.
And is proposed stone wall step hall with that about?
That's, that was to limit my grading, if I didn't lift that short wall, that's only two feet, then I wouldn't need to push the grading a little bit further, and the great, the slope is falling away fast there. So we would have pushed the grading almost guys to the property line.
Sue, did you have?
Yeah, you did mention where your, your big utilities are going. Generator?
Yes.
Who is he fits? Little is he fits?
Generator is there, on that side of the garage, and the air conditioning units are on this side of the garage.
All right, sprinkler system?
There's already a irrigation one of those, right?
Right.
You, while mentioning that, I thought was very interesting, but I had no idea. The code for a flat roof is different, like for pitch?
Right, a standard house with a pitch roof, it's thirty-seven feet. A, a flat roof is thirty, thirty, thirty.
Did not know that, interesting. Okay, now we can talk a little bit about, there's that pool fencing that's running around, and I know somebody mentioned it's picket at a point, and then it goes into a chain link.
Yeah.
So it's picket basically where it's with, basically within the limit of work. Where it's gonna be like visible to the homeowner largely. So here and here. And then where it's kind of downsloping into the woods is where we transition to a. And this and that's primarily because of there's a lot of topography in there and chain link's the only thing that's flexible enough to.
But it won't have a bar on the top or anything like that. It it's just an open chain link, right?
This fits.
How far is it going?
I'm sorry.
It's going through. Does it go all the way around?
Visibility, right?
Nope, so it's, so the the pool enclosure goes off the corner of the garage here. Goes across here, then kind of down into like downslope and kind of into the woods around here. Then it connects up to here. And then this wa- this stone wall serves as the pool enclosure for this side. And then there's like there'd be a gate here. So basically, the pool enclosure is.
Oh, so that's not fence going around the sub area.
No, 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 this is just the limit of work.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, no fence, this is the only fence on site other than the small one around some of the vegetable garden.
They did. There's no bar at the top, they said.
So such a fence can sit outside the limit of work.
There's no bar at the top.
We've allowed that.
Correct, as long as you as long as it's in full code.
We've allowed that.
As long as we can get a tension wire, there'll be a tension wire just to make full code.
Yeah.
Uh, because they can't.
People begin to think that's very much. No, it's just, you'll see the bar in the wood, there's with the right people. Chambering the fence. Can they, can you stay within the limit of work?
For the fence?
For the fence?
It's, it's part of, part of the natural beauty of the lot, though, is that you're looking out over this unobstructed view of the of the golf course. So we've worked pretty hard to find plateaus where we could position the fence that are gonna be least obstructive to the client and to the others.
The only thing to be careful about is not to assume, and I would assume that the fence is, anything I can do is within the fence. And then, you know, that's all of a sudden sets up a line, so I I don't know the answer to it, you know.
The slope here is significant. I mean, it's, you wouldn't wanna be down there. I mean, it draws off fast.
Physically, it couldn't do anything down there.
Well, I mean, all of a sudden somebody goes, oh, this tree's in my way, let me cut it down. I know my view, that's that's the sort of stuff that gets annoying.
I don't know if I can address your concern, but one thing that the Western Conservation Commission often has us do with concern about the middle zone is we set survey monuments like six inches up from the ground.
Oh, that's a good.
So then.
Good answer, right?
Go see him.
Yeah.
Stole signs?
And we, the House Base Commission has.
Yeah, we will radioactive blow.
Well, no, but it's not just you, it shows the homeowner where they have their.
Right, yeah.
And.
Electric fence.
We usually set a twenty-five foot on center and aim for six inches appropriate.
Well, that's a start, I think, yeah, just something whether it's in the in the conditions or in the decision or in the. Somebody's gotta know this, ripening of orange and something spiked on it or, you know. The max thing you know to be moved around to that. Right.
Yeah, at least, yeah, you get something.
Something hard.
Sue, did you have more?
I did, but I think I was older. It's mostly to do with the, I assume it's a code requirement to have lighting on the garage doors.
You, no, you have to have lighting on the mandors, as I.
Mandor for the garage door? I'm just thinking it's such an archaic thing, probably dating back to the time when people had little, you know, gas lamps on their cars and drove in and you had to be lit. But nowadays, everybody has these brand new xenon or xenon lights that light up everything. And so it just seems interesting that it's gotten to be a decorative thing that we have to have lighting on those garage doors. I'm just not sure it's really.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I think is.
Would you cut them from three to two? Do you need three lights there?
It's because there's a mandor over here as well, so there's three bays.
And one mandor.
And one mandor.
So we can have a light mandor.
Um, I mean, the only thought is that a car pulling up to like, if if there's a guest that's pulling into like this area, just being able to see where they're at.
So they have headlights.
They don't they have headlights?
They park there.
Oh, walking to the car. Oh, they park into jungle.
And then walk, you know, just, you know, if somebody pulls in here and.
Just asking quick. Just, it seems like one more reason to have so many lumens head for our sky so nobody can see a star, but anyway.
Steve? Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, about the, can you go back to the, the lighting on the landscape things? Because there were some randomly placed lights. What are those up above the house there?
Here?
Yes, what is that?
So this is a kind of a path, it's kind of this spine of of paving that kind of connects through the house and then back to this area, so.
The path to what though?
What's that?
The path to what?
The front door.
To the, yeah, from from this side of the drive to the front door.
From there, it's parking your head, okay.
Yeah.
And those are the little foot ones, right?
How, those are actually these these little domes that are about, just basically stick up off the ground about and.
They were taking snowball.
What's that?
Snow? What, is it snow, will be in the snow?
You won't see them in the snow, they're LEDs. So they have.
Okay, one more from the audience.
And that fence, what is the elevation?
Probably four foot tall. Four feet, it's required for the code. Oh.
And what elevation of the topography is that?
Um, it's hard to say, but it's, I mean, like right here. Two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, twenty.
I guess he's gonna ask, does he see it?
Yeah.
Let's get to that.
Um, so it's it's a solid twenty or thirty feet above your lot.
Plus you've got trees.
And this is all headley wooded. And the good thing about the black, uh, the black chain link fence is we've used it several times. It just disappears, like in vegetation, you have vegetation behind it and in front of it.
The driveway comes all the way over.
Don't see it.
Okay, I think we're done. Uh, we don't, unlike the last one, I don't, do we have any unresolved matters here?
I'd just like to see how this works with the other.
Let's say, well, keep our thinking.
It's nice to go into zero.
Yeah.
Right, but if you still have the tool, you might need some back and forth discussion.
Uh, can you stay for the next, is it yours?
No, next one's not mine.
Okay, do you mind staying, just in case?
No, we can stay.
That way if you see something works, it doesn't work, you can.
Okay, thank you, I think we're done. Can we move on?
Don't want to do this in the middle of the sidewalk.
Formally zero.
Yeah.
Formally zero.
You need to do this shape, they did it already for you. We are a little bit behind and I hate to go late into the night. So you have your, you have your choice. We can begin this and then see if I say ten thirty and we're done with it. Uh, or we can just say, hey, we gave it college try to hear it tonight and we'll hear it next. You wanna start tonight and leave us? But I don't, I just don't want you to be, I don't want you to be offended if I say time and we'll continue this night. Okay, great. It's not like we don't like you or anything. Maybe we don't like, it's not that.
Yes, I do.
What's that?
Oh, yes, this is.
So we don't wanna hurry this.
Yes. Well, but it's something outside of this example of a cost rather than what they're talking on.
Okay, so we're gonna let him talk uninterrupted here now. So. We've learned. We. Make it smaller.
So this is the original, uh, original existing lot prior to the actual subdivision.
Their name?
Uh, Jason Lloyd, the Justin Company. So here's fifty-five hidden road, uh, the original layout. Meridian did this subdivision in in two thousand and four, it got approved in two thousand and five. There was existing house, driveway. The lot that we have is this lower section down here. That that comes down and the property line comes up along that side. On the next one. So here's the subdividing lot, this is the the lotting plan, so we have, here's actually our lot here. Here's the approved limit of work from the subdivision. Uh, there's an existing drainage easement on our property, there's also an existing waterline on our property, uh, waterline easement on our property. This is the infrastructure they had put together, so they they brought the driveway down about sixty percent of the way. Septic system, utilities through that area there. They have one leaching catch basin with an overflow for the drainage for the entire driveway. It's a ten foot wide driveway, uh, which we're required to do a fourteen foot wide now. They have the utilities all two feet apart from each other, run right by the the septic system. Now the the water line is required to be ten feet away from all of this, all of the utilities. So this configuration wouldn't work with the with this as now, with our requirements now. And then it's also a ten foot wide driveway, which of course with the fire department, we're stuck with doing a fourteen foot wide driveway. So here's the, just a little, you know, basically, our existing additions plan. So you have a ledge showing here, there's a, the existing water line that currently goes up to to the upper lot, fifty-five hidden. Here's that easement, uh, drain line. And this is basically the setback line coming through there. We do have a break of, there's a zone B and there's a zone A line that comes across that edge.
So when you say that setback, that's, sorry, but I have to ask, is that the flexible zone setback or your setback?
So, oh, so you have, you have thirty-five here, uh, twenty for the internals. And then over here, it's forty-five feet because of the, because of the zone A section that is in.
Similar to the previous one you hear in this room, second half and also modification.
But it was fifty.
That's not a limit of work.
Yeah.
Yep, this was the zone setback. So here's the, here's the, um, the plot plan that we put together, so, um, and actually you don't see it as well here. So we have, here's the driveway that we're proposing coming up. Here's the existing house. Um, in purple, uh, the actual retaining walls, so I'll walk you through this from the site plan. In black is the existing, right there, coming along this edge, coming along this edge here. That's the existing limit of work that was approved by the planning board. What we're proposing is the orange that's coming along this edge. So this little, this expansion here coming down. This whole expansion is is, this section here is part of the grading that we have to do due to the fire pull off and the hot fire hydrant requirement. This section here is just for the easements. Uh, there's no grading over there, but we have to have access to the easements if we ever have to repair the water lines on the property or if somebody has to repair the actual drainage on the property. Um, because the drive, because the septic system can't be used under the, under the proposed driveway. We had to propose a septic system along this edge, that's why there's a bump out with the limit of work on that side. We're proposing a drip irrigation septic system, so, um, it's actually gonna go in between the trees. So it's gonna run in in between, they're gonna use a ditch which to install the actual septic system. The section's up here, coming up here. Part of this is this, this is the driveway court area for the, for the actual house. This whole section is all based on the turnaround for the actual fire truck. So that section is making us cut into this this hill, which then creates this wall, which then creates some grading, which is how come that limit of work is expanded as much as it is on that side. Um, same goes for, um, these retaining walls through here. Um, so what we're doing is the house is actually going up and it's gonna be about a five foot cut, so all those walls are actually cut walls. Um, so from the upgrading side, uh, they're gonna look down and they won't see the walls at all, they'll look across. They'll go down, they'll, they'll see the cut, um, and then there'll be some plantings in that section right there.
Sorry, Jay, what is the color that indicates your requested amendment?
The orange.
Everything in orange?
Yeah.
Not the poche stuff, there's a line there that's orange.
So that's the, this orange hatch, this section here, this is the, and then what happens is this green actually is something that is the original limit of work or we're actually moving it, taking it back.
Give it back.
Give it back, because what they did is actually, this driveway goes through that ledge. So they're proposing cutting through that, the giant piece of ledge that's there on site, which we wanted to do was basically come in between the two pieces of ledge for the driveway. And when you do that, it pushes out the limit of work, and so you'll see it here. So here's the actual site plan. So this section here, which is pushing out our limit, a lot of our limit of work, that's a requirement for the fire department. So that is, uh, when the fire department comes to the actual house for any kind of, whether it be a fire or emergency, they're gonna be in two vehicles. One's gonna be a pump truck and one's gonna be the ladder truck. So we're, we're, we have to put a hydrant here. We have to put a hydrant here and we're required to have a pull off for the pump truck to be here. The reason why is because the hydrant, the close hydrants is up there and our driveway is over five hundred feet long, so we're, we're not close enough to the hydrant, so we're required to put one on site. Um, so now we have to give this area here so the fire truck pulls off and the pump truck pulls off here and then the ladder truck goes all the way up, pulls up along the side of the garage, then back around, turn up and around and then come back. So that, so we're forced to kind of push this out, so that's why this this limit of work gets pushed out. I'm not gonna go through the the tree removals, but Karen and Trapp and Giulietta will go through them. We're actually removing last trees that was originally proposed by.
Pure. Pure.
Pure, yes.
Send them home, yeah?
Pure trees. Um, and so for the, so we have the driveway coming through here. Um, we have a drainage system, which is for the, the full house, the full driveway area that's here. We have, uh, the rest of this is actually porous asphalt driveway, this is a stone pull off. So what happens is this actually becomes somewhat of a conveyance of water. The water drops down, it's gonna follow the trench underneath the actual driveway, bring it all the way to the section here. So this area is actually about eight feet deep of stone. And so that's where everything's gonna infiltrate from the, from the two driveway sections and slowly infiltrate through there. There's, there's, there's a, there's an existing swale here that takes some of the flow that comes down through there. Um, so then what we're doing is that there are a couple of walls that have come off that swell, so there is a small rain garden on the side to allow the water to come down and come over and then go back down through that area. Um, we did the analysis and so we are, and we broke up our actual analysis, instead of using the golf course all the way through, we analyzed this property line.
That's the golf course right there.
Yeah, exactly. We analyzed both sides, um, and we're reducing runoff to to both sides of the, of the actual, of the, of the golf course. So that's the neighborhood locus. Um, Trapp's gonna go to talk about that later in the presentation. This is a construction management plan. Um, so this is the first phase of how we're actually gonna, so we actually have, the driveway mouth is a little bit bigger than it's gonna be for, for the proposal. Uh, we have notes about cleaning the street, uh, at the end of each day. Required, and basically that this has to actually be a stone section for, so this way no mud can get into the street. Uh, there's the actual eight by twenty, um, trailer for the, for the site super. Um, there's gonna be a couple of parking spots as we take out this ledge, so there'll be about four or five parking spots along this side here for temporary parking. We have notes on the plan that say all additional workers have to be shuttled on site, because we don't have any room for them, so they're gonna be shuttled to the site. We also have notes that deliveries have to be done on the property and not in the, in hidden road. Um, so that's why we have this open mouth here, so it's, so basically the truck will have to come on site, take everything off, then come off site. This way that city idling inside hidden road blocking that road. Uh, we also, um, I did speak with one of the abutters that we were talking about, we're gonna put some, um, fill parking signs along hidden road um, for our property, along the frontage along that side, saying it's no parking either side of, of hidden road. So none of the people will come in even temporarily for thirty minutes and they don't park on the, on the, uh, within hidden road, the park, within the temporary parking on the, on the section over here. Um, for the work itself, they're gonna come, kind of come through, you're gonna have to build this incrementally, because it's the way it lays out. So you're gonna build out the road, you're gonna build out the actual portions of the walls as you come down through here. You'll do some of the grading for the road as you're coming down through this section here. And then you're gonna end up stop plateauing this area out and then you're gonna start using this area for stockpiling, putting materials, all that kind of stuff. And then the final build out is gonna be the, so you're basically gonna end up building this backwards. So you gotta build the walls, build the house, put the drainage in, put the septic in, and then start building these walls back and then start pulling this driveway back and you start building the drainage for the driveway as you go up, so it's a total backwards version of the construction.
Jay, I'm gonna interrupt you, sorry. Dave, um, I don't think we're gonna get through this tonight. So what I'd like to do is divide the conversation into, I'd like to have a conversation about the amendment. Is that, is that a fair thing, guys? Because it looks like it's pretty substantial.
Yes.
So we'll try to get that done tonight. Is that okay? Is that a fair way to, to act a problem?
Yeah.
Because I see a lot of green there, I mean, a lot of whatever the color, a yellow. So can we just have a conversation about that a little bit?
Sure, yeah.
Who was thinking what when this thing was originally done? Why so much change?
Right, well, that's, so you have.
It sounds like it wasn't thought through at the beginning, but is that right?
So back in two thousand and four.
Not to blame you.
And it's, well, that's.
The timer wasn't that good back then.
So back in two thousand and four, we all let it go actually signed it, so. So back in two thousand and four, the board didn't require a full design for the actual, for each individual lot that they require now. So there was never any thought about what was going to happen in advance.
Can you go back to the yellow?
Yeah. Which, this here?
No, you were asking for the change.
Oh, the change, yeah. So what I was actually, I'll just show you real quick with this, is that, so what they did is, you know, you basically have a ten-foot wide driveway and you barely have the limit of work just beyond it, so it doesn't even really handle the grading itself.
Yeah, right.
And then they stopped it, and they said, you know what, we're not even going to think about what kind of house it's going to go up here, even though this slope is about a four-to-one slope. Who's going to build a house there, who's going to, you got to put walls in, you got to cut it in, you got to do that kind of stuff. No one ever thought about what was going to happen next. And so, there wasn't a lot of forethought, it was just an easy thing to go, I'm just going to do this box, and that's kind of what I'm going to do. Nobody thought about what was going to happen next.
What's the yellow one?
So this is the septic systems, that's the septic system right there. And as I think, so this one, so as this came out, they had, for this entire section, they had one leaching catch basin. That for all the purpose there, that's literally impossible. So this is, again, the drainage is fully under design, the driveway's under design, the septic system can't go there, the utilities can't work that, so as soon as we started looking at all that, I'm like, now we're going to start having to push everything up to make everything work on site.
So give us. I understood your narrative as you meant, but can you just list the reasons why this has to change so much?
Sure.
Reason number one, reason number two.
Yeah, so we have, so the first, the easiest ones are the fact that they never included the two existing easements on the property within the limit of work. So if someone, which is this historic drainage line, which is part of the Hidden Road drainage, if this ever fails, no one has the ability to actually work on it, because it's outside the limit of work.
Right.
If this water line that feeds this section of Hidden Road, if this ever, was ever needed to any kind of repair, no one can get access to it because there's no limit of work on it.
So they didn't consider the easement?
Exactly. So that gives you this spot, literally this spot right there. Yeah, so that's that spot right there. This section here, this whole section here is one-hundred percent from the fire department, right? We have to put the hydrant there, we have to do the pull-off, and so that's why our grading is through that section, and so we're forced to actually fill this section out and grade the bigger plateau area for the pump truck this end. These other areas up top are all based on the grading for the fourteen-foot wide driveway. So we put as many walls as possible to try to limit the disturbance, but the fourteen-foot wide driveway is pushing out beyond the limit of work already, and then as soon as you start grading it, you're forced to tie in, and then you're trying to, you're cutting pieces of ledge, you're tying the grade, so that's, so that's all, this up here is all based on that change. Down here, it's really because of the fact that we're not coming through the ledge. As we come to, if we came through the ledge here, this, we're giving back this section to give more space between us and that house. As we come down this lower section, this doesn't change much here, because we're in the same exact location for the limit of work. But when we come back up, we've got to climb a little bit higher, so that's why we have to put this retaining wall in, which then affects the limit of work right there. This here is totally one of set for the septic system. And so since we can't put the septic here because we have to use that driveway drainage plus the utility issues, we have to put the septic there. This whole section here is based on the drive cord area getting bumped out because of the turnaround for the fire truck. So the grading doesn't just stop at the wall, then we have to grade on the other side of the wall to make sure that these walls are all in the setback, so we've got to make sure they're all conformed to zoning. Therefore, that grading pulls you all the way up, so that's why there's also proposed plantings all on the top of there, because whatever vegetation we take down, we want to replace with proposed plantings, which Karen can talk about. So this section, so same thing on this, so this is all the septic system down here, and then this up here, which I know is the, impacts the most, is the neighbor directly behind us, is impacted the most by this change. That change is totally about the fact that we're trying to set the house down to keep the height, you know, from being an issue. And so, and the utilities. We bring the utilities on the backside of the house through here, that's what brings that up. But by dropping that house through there, to try to work on that four-to-one slope or five-to-one slope, you know, that's, we need those walls to be able to protect the house, so we decided that instead of popping the house up and then creating like, you know, fill walls, and then it being extremely high towards this, we decided to cut itself down, create cut walls, be as low as possible.
So what if you reduce the size of the house? Just to ask the question.
How many bedrooms is this?
It's six bedrooms.
So that drives the septic system.
Correct. And remember, the septic system isn't taking out any trees at all, so.
Right, but.
But the septic was fundamentally moved.
Yes, we can't, we can't put it under the driveway.
It's going to be a different place entirely.
And I think honestly, this, if we were to use a conventional system there, you'd wipe out every bit of tree in that whole area.
Right, right, so what are the impacts of what you're asking?
So what we did is we took a look at it, and I can let them talk about.
Can you go back to the yellow?
Yeah. And so, right here, if you look, if you analyze the whole section here, you know, about where the Meridian driveway stops, we actually are reducing the amount of trees that were taken out. Even though the limit of work's expanded, we're reducing the amount of trees that are coming out.
So the impact of expanding the limit of work is actually positive.
Right, and we're also putting in more trees in than we're actually taking out.
Basically, from the house to Hidden Road, it's all just access for a car to get to the house.
Exactly.
I mean, everything else, that's, you know, the house itself, once again, from the house to the new, to the world thing, the left, it's something about walls and zoning setbacks.
Correct, so you have, so there's.
Not that one.
No, right next to the house.
Yeah, can you do that one again?
Yes, so these are all cut walls. And so you have to make sure you're here in the setbacks, because you cannot, they're in the, the wall itself is inside the actual zoning setback. So we have to make sure as a structure that it isn't considered, I should, we have to make sure it's not considered a structure, so it doesn't require extra setbacks. And so, but what we end up doing is, we have to grade it and cut, and then grade on the other side to make sure that that wall's less than four feet from unbalanced fill, and not considered a structure. So, yes. So there's two rules, Steve. There's two rules for the walls, so you actually have, you're three feet above existing grade, and so the actual zoning bylaw is quiet on cut walls, because cut walls are typically below grade, below natural grade. And so what John has done is that he basically goes to the state code. So walls that have four feet of unbalanced fill or more are structures. So when you go to a cut wall, you can stack walls, you can stack two, three-foot walls, and it would be six feet total, but you're okay because you're less than four feet unbalanced in each one. If they were fill walls, you can't stack them, they can't get above three feet. So that, it's the zone, it's the actual definitions in the zoning bylaw. I think you mentioned earlier, there's nothing about a cut wall in the zoning bylaw. So he goes into state codes. And so that's how come these are actually, you can see some of these tiered walls in that section because of that.
Let me hold you there, is there any questions from the audience on the request for an amendment? Still affect the septic?
Yes, I don't understand. If the maximum height of the building is from the average grade of the footprint of the building, if you're sliding the building downhill a bit, your maximum, your average grade will be lower. So why cutting the building into the slope? I mean, it has to be cut into the slope anyway. So why would that be making the building lower when it's further uphill?
Well, what happens is you have two options, you can either fill the backside, and then have the house sit on that grade, and then fill entirely.
No, you still have the same starting point.
You don't, you're going to have, you have two sections, you actually can, I'm going to start higher at the highest point of my grade where the house sits, and then I'm going to fill on the lower side. What we're doing is we're actually cutting the highest part here and setting the house down. So at the lower side, we're at the walkout.
But that's not your average grade.
Your average grade is natural all the way around, it's based on the existing grades through this entire area, which we're compliant by, so that's, just the house prior to it up on fifty-five, it's thirty-two feet from the average natural grade. We're thirty-point-five, so, and we're actually with this slope, that's not easy to get. Like, you have about a fifteen-foot grade change across that side, and we're still below the actual requirement.
So let me, what is your concern? Why did you ask that question?
I asked that question because the average, isn't the average grade from the highest point of the house footprint to the lowest point of the house footprint?
Why are you asking this?
Because of the need to move the house.
Okay, right, so I think she needs another round of that, why don't you go back to explaining? We'll let her get her question.
So what happens is.
The yellow, or whatever is best for her.
Yeah, there.
She wants to know, why do you have to have that bump out near, is that on your corner?
This section here. So what happens here, this is all based on, this whole section here is all one-hundred percent based on the fire department with the fire truck coming back through here. We have the utilities on the backside coming into the house, so that creates this little section here, but no additional trees are being removed in that area whatsoever.
So there's no impact?
There's no impact.
Okay.
These walls are getting broken up because of the, because of the, right now, I think visually, I think it's about an eight-foot, it's about an eight-foot grade change there, and so they're breaking it up into three walls, with plantings in between. And then this wall down here is actually compliant to the setback on that side.
So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think for her, it's a lower impact.
Right, exactly.
Lowering the house, in order to lower the house, he needs to expand his limit of work, so he can dig the house into the.
If you were to go the other way.
But I want to make sure she has to let us know.
I don't understand that.
Can I say something there?
Somebody else try to explain that to her.
So Jay, what is the, what is the top of the existing knoll now?
That section here, let me grab my clip.
Because I remember walking up that grade, and halfway up that grade, I said, where is the elevation of the new house going to be? And you said, here, and that was halfway up that slope.
Right.
So instead of being on the top of the slope building, they're basically going to cut the slope and set the first floor lower down. So they're not building on top of that knoll, they're actually building, as far as I understood it, at least a floor down, so everything is lower, so they're not, so.
It's good news for you.
So you, yeah, so you'll be looking over.
So the slope.
They need to cut the slope.
Do you have site section?
Yeah, that would be the easiest to show.
The slope is my half. And if we choose to.
No, they do, no, I do, he does.
To restore to a higher point, that is, if we cut into the slope and with those.
Between the up slope and.
Is it on this side, or is it on the landscape?
Yeah.
To the architectural?
Okay, let's answer that conversation. Yeah, right, let's have one conversation on that.
I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's why.
The higher up the elevation we go.
She's got, she's got.
There's the section.
There we go. The next one should be.
Okay. Is that it?
Strobing, thank you.
This is, this is really bad.
Can I ask, can I?
Yeah, go for it.
Going to listen.
Yeah, by all means, and then we'll finish up with this, Jay.
Okay, okay, so the height of the house has to be less than thirty-two feet from the average grade, right? So if your house is from here to here, isn't the average grade at this point where the red line is?
Yeah, average grade is three feet below our first floor elevation.
Yeah, so around there.
Yeah, so if the house were moved down here, the average grade would be over here, and it would be lower down, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
It would be lower.
Yeah.
So having the house sit farther uphill raises the height of the house.
That's not what he's doing.
No, that's a.
Well, she's basically asking it to be slid down.
Yeah, it's just lowered down.
Okay.
So having it as high as possible and needing that extra.
Go back to this.
Area beyond the limit of work.
Yeah, can you go back?
Go back to the second.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good one.
Civil.
One of the, one of the major challenges we've had is accommodating the fire department. At the same time, we're trying to place the house in a way that allows us to gain access to it. And the topography is so steep, we couldn't accommodate the fire truck backup need, and place the house at a reasonable elevation that accommodated that. So we really had to find this perfect balance in terms of the topography to get the house in, keep it low, and enable us to have the turnaround from the fire truck without violating the retaining wall.
So if you move it down, you can't satisfy the fire department need, is that what you're saying?
You can't slide it down another ten, fifteen feet?
You can't.
What's the issue?
Because all these retaining walls up here then become structures, and we start to violate the area of the septic.
What if you made the house smaller? You made the house smaller, the footprint would be smaller than you could possibly slide it down.
This is, right here is the setback line, so it's right along the setback line. So right now, you're allowed to project some decks and cantilevers into the setback line, less than three feet, as long as they're less than five feet off the house. So a couple of these actually kind of just come across the setback a little bit, so this is about as far as you can get moving down the hill.
Meaning even if you made the house smaller?
If you want to, you can't move this part down any farther.
We've also made the house predominantly a one-story house in order to keep it low. Sixty percent of the house is twenty-six feet in height. There's only a very small percentage that is thirty-point-five. The house is predominantly a one-story house in order to keep it low to the others.
You've got some interesting, I mean, right now you've got some interesting angles, you know, to give some dynamic energy to the house, et cetera, but your spines, I believe, inside are still orthogonal. Can you do a little bit more flexibility and see if you can slide and squeeze and bring it down more? So maybe your spines aren't orthogonal, maybe they're angled a little bit.
Does it have to have that basic footprint?
We've got a little more work to do tonight, can we conclude there and have you guys put on your thinking caps and see if you can be creative and slide it down a little bit?
I mean, we've worked pretty darn hard in order to find the balance of all the different pressure corners that we've been asked to look at.
Yeah.
And what if you return?
You try? You try one more.
Yeah, we always try.
The other thing that's, yeah, the other thing is if we can put that as a composite with the other plan, I think that'll also let us know, geez, you're up against literally the wall because of what's happening on the next lot, or you might have a little bit more room where they're also in trouble, because they're making some sorts of, you can't, you know, make.
Well, I just want to make sure that we appreciate the house is very low, that this issue of height is, my worry is a bit herring.
Well, it may be a bit herring, however, the implication of the size of the footprint means that you're asking for an amendment to change the limit of work, so it may be low, but you're asking for a lot of changes. Right, exactly.
A little different if you weren't asking for it.
If you weren't asking, but you are, you're asking for change.
We might, in order to, in order to compress the house and make it a smaller footprint, we may be forced to make it higher.
Because that's a trade-off for us, you're saying?
That, we're trying to save trees, we're trying to keep the house low, and we're trying to accommodate the fire department and the septic, and actually, and most importantly, keep it low.
Okay.
And I think those are important, you know, expectations and goals. You've been working with this obviously for quite a bit of time, and, you know, we respect that and applaud it. But at the same point, we need a couple of times to go through this, we did the sidewalk, you know, there's a lot going on, we need to absorb, you know, it was a tough site, I think, when it was done in oh-four, and now it's tougher because of all the regs and requirements. But before we just say, yeah, go ahead, we want to make sure this really is tight as we can get.
Well, okay, let's end it there, and then you can, you have the first chance at it next time.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
If we're going to continue, we should save the date.
Okay, you said the next day if it's available, is that right?
So we had some time set aside at the next meeting for a decision on this.
It's going to be a lot longer than that.
But it's going to be longer than that, if we do this on the sixteenth, but we're not looking any better coming into November sixth either.
Let's do the sixteenth then.
Okay, so we'll continue both of them to the sixteenth?
Yeah.
I was going to ask two questions, sorry. How long do you think your construction is going to be? I don't want to get these guys, the old guys too, your constructing.
I would say fourteen months.
Fourteen months. And is Rob still around?
Yes.
Do you know how long your construction is going to be? Give or take, is there an estimate?
The G C was here actually for the hearing. I think this whole schedule was approximately twenty-four months.
Okay, so that's the beginning of some of the discussions to have with the neighbors and how we're going to do construction management, et cetera, assuming you both get off in the same meeting. You know, everybody goes at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's, we couldn't even get to that slide to show maybe ninety-sixty percent.
I think so, yeah. Okay, sorry, guys.
Thanks, Rob.
Let's go, we're done sixty-old road.
And that's what the highest.
Most of the houses.
I would pick maybe forty-nine or forty-eight. There's nothing.
Oh, there's.
That's just simple.
Yeah, but we're really trying to.
I mean, if the garage part or.
So I'm three per day. I have minor issues.
Well, the whole house is.
Okay.
So we're, we're making it a flat. And then we're cascading the house down. I mean, we're going to such. We're just going to such.
It's two words. At least forty-four.
Jay, do you need some time?
No, I looked at this.
Okay, do you want to comment out loud or do you?
Were you talking about this?
We'll start.
What is Steve looking at, the memorandum?
He's looking at the memorandum, so we have the memorandum and the decision. Okay.
Good evening.
Yeah, we're doing the memorandum.
Yeah, so the memo first.
Memorandum, it says to the zoning board of the bill dated today, October second, two thousand nine, sixty old road scene, road site plan.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Aye.
Okay. And now the decision. One thing I'd like to point out on the decision for sixty-old road is I do have.
Let's do, uh, Newton, let's do the Pine Brook or?
You want to do Pine Brook first?
That's easy.
Okay, we'll do Pine Brook first. Let me hand out Pine Brook, huh?
Why don't we jump into the one sixteen?
Good, I just, I want to get the easy ones done first, cause it's a feeling of accomplishment.
I just have a question, where is the memorandum on the agenda?
It wasn't on the agenda, it's just a memorandum that the board's using to transmit to the Z B A. I mean, I think it's sufficiently tied into the decision. Did I give you that?
No. We didn't, we didn't put down here.
Did I give you one, Tony, for Newton?
Yeah, I, well, I've already given you.
Yeah, okay, so that you can, that'll be this right there.
So, yeah, my change is you haven't, because I sent them away.
Yeah, so I don't, this is, what's printed up is the same as what was sent out.
Right, but he has changed.
This weekend, yeah, so.
Yeah.
One change to forty-two Newton I had is, um, I confirmed the footprint of the facility with, with Rob, with Rob Gemma. Um, the footprint we commented development of the new, of the new facility is actually larger, the building footprint is smaller, so I clarified that in the maximize open space finding, which is up here.
So that's been changed.
So that's, that's not changed on what you have.
Right, but it will be changed.
But it will be changed, that's my proposed change.
Where is that?
That's on page four.
Yeah.
See, the footprint of the new facility is smaller than that, this is.
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't see that here.
Looking for.
On page four?
Maximize open space.
I just have a typo on here.
Okay.
So this is incorrect?
Yeah.
So, so what's the correct one, is that?
The revised.
That C up there?
Yeah. This right here is what I'm proposing, is what I'm saying.
What did we get in the paper?
In the paper, you got, you got this.
At some point, I don't know, this is a discovery point, I'll be, three, twelve seventeen, talks about a base of species of vegetation, and you can take out all this stuff. One of the things they have in there is Norway maples. Norway maples at a certain size, I think you probably should discuss about whether they should be taken down to a certain point. Their trees are important, but this is not the time for it.
Okay.
But I think it's something that has to be addressed.
Okay.
At some point, in a base of species at thirty inches or twenty inches or a certain size, you say, hey, you know, I don't know if that becomes a tree versus.
It's worthwhile, then as a tree to, yeah.
I mean, cause it's like there's some significant Norway maples in my neighborhood, and I'd hate to see them go.
Yeah, we came across that on the ever source.
Let's put that on T B D.
Yep, we've come across that most times.
Okay.
Unless you just had small correction?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That might be.
Steve, do you have anything major?
Um, well, yeah, I have some questions. On the first page, says, first paragraph says, construction of a new R G F A single-family dwelling. I assume you mean wastewater.
R G F A single-family wastewater.
And residence X.
That's an A.
That's A.
Yeah, that should be A.
Um, and then on page four, I'm very confused, so this says the site is at forty-two Newton, but then here you say the existing building lot is forty-two Newton, and lot four is a new building lot. On page four.
Yeah, so.
Are these backwards?
No. Forty-two Newton is, forty-two Newton is the address of the country club overall, and it's, it spans the two lots. So lot four is the one that's considered on the southern side of Newton where the new building is gonna go. The other lot is just considered forty-two Newton, and they have the same parcel number too.
Okay, well, I just wonder, maybe you should still say forty-two Newton up here.
Forty-two Newton comma, lot four?
Yes.
I got that.
And then there's all this missing, um.
Yeah, so I got that in, I had to get that, I got to get that new info from Rob.
Okay. So then, um, I, I won't go over minor typos, but on one B on the next page. See?
Yeah.
See, on average scale, the existing wooded buffer to thirty-five Newton will be partially compromised, how?
And they are building the existing building into that wooded buffer. There's a wooded buffer now of about sixty or so feet, and the, the new building is coming into that buffer. There's a green.
Yeah.
And then adjacent to that green is about sixty, sixty feet of wood.
I think you should say that.
What's that?
By the building at the end of the sentence.
Okay.
How far into it you're going?
And then that's P T O, right? For the timing?
Um, yes.
Um, have the. Rest of the page is just grammar, so.
Okay.
Sue?
I already said that.
I'm just wondering, when you were just looking at one B, said to remove stone, we use to fill in the existing entrance. B?
Yeah.
It says, it says an existing stone wall property was partially removed. Remove stone wall, this remove stone will be used to fill in the existing entrance, what is that?
So they do have an existing driveway?
Yeah.
And they're gonna, remove, that driveway is gonna be relocated, so it's directly across from the clubhouse driveway?
Okay.
So it's basically an aligned intersection, so they're have to take out a section of wall for the new driveway, take that section of wall, fill in where the existing driveway is.
And move it, yeah, to where it exists.
So the existing entrance, which is being moved or something, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Been conclusive there.
Okay.
Which is, you know, no longer valid or however you want to put it.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah.
I just. Um, I move that we approve certificate of actions, I feel an approval for forty-two Newton Street with comments uh, as noted previously.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
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 Okay. Now, I've planned out sixty-old road, correct?
Is it?
Okay, you knew it.
I did have one question about the decision, whether it's appropriate.
Yeah, you can, we don't, we don't continue until now, but we can, but.
Um, I just, I was curious as to whether, um, if the board felt it was appropriate, whether the decision itself would make reference to or incorporate the separate memo being presented by the town planner, or for the decision itself to include a sentence or two that provides a, a message to the Z B A expressing the board's viewpoint, if, if it is the board's viewpoint, I think it is, that the, um, having granted the section approval, it would be appropriate for the zoning board to, you know, grant such relief as would allow the, 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 you know, the Wevers to carry out what this board has now approved, you know, something, something along those lines.
So we were pretty careful to use the language they asked us, right? To say that it's consistent with their work.
And, and giving an explanation for their departure from whatever the conditions were. I, I guess my concern, my concern is that.
Tell me the language that you would like us to use. Or do you have that? You're being very subtle.
I was leaving it to.
No, but I'm, that, that, that I think is the exact spot you should want us to go to, to say it's consistent with your order. I would not want to push them any further. It's their decision, I don't want to tell them that you should make this decision.
Oh, absolutely, I, I mean, respecting the independence of the boards, but of course.
Right, exactly.
But, but planning boards give recommendations to the zoning board, you know, variety.
Recommendations are made. It says, well, it says, the planning board believes the current proposal meets the requirements and makes, or makes, and they grant exactly, be consistent, that's our recommendation.
I think that's the most helpful we should be to you, for your sake. I think if we push it any further, you might have pushback. That's my word, for you.
I, I, I understand, and I, obviously, that's, that's not what I, and I, I don't want pushback from the board, we want the board to, to accept this favorably, obviously.
Yeah, so again, we had open conversations with John Field, he gave us the guidance. And we closely followed that guidance and then gave him what he asked us. If we felt comfortable doing that, and we did. So just to let you know, I think it's good news for you.
Hey.
Sure. So I submitted time to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Try reviewing before any.
I.
Try.
I love the eleven, do you think that it's, that it's six inches from the zoning setback, or is that six inches, we're measuring inches, or is that?
Inches?
No, it's six inches.
It is as well.
It's forty point five, or it's forty-five point five, yeah, so it's six inches.
Why it has to be?
That's why you called that.
Okay, okay, good, I just wanted to, sure, okay, I just have a couple little.
Yeah. Okay.
And that's a split.
So the thing that should be, I hear a minor.
I hope I'm not asking my wife, I split it, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I didn't have a good country thing, yeah.
Eamonn, I'm just not sure, I don't understand, is the house decided with an initial?
Is that okay, Steve, would you like me to go on?
No, it's not if it's type of minor.
Or like the English thing that you did over that added, you know, a couple lines by the building, I'm like.
So Leslie wants to know about site sensitivity.
Site sensitivity? It's decided with an initial unpermitted clearance?
Yeah, that's a good sign. Yeah. The whole thing was cleared.
Yeah, unpermitted, okay, okay, all right. All right, I just wasn't sure of how that was all put in there. The rest of the stuff I have in here is small and I think I can just give to you.
Okay.
Okay. Page four.
Page four.
Average grade, I think you should say what it is. Rather, in addition to no change.
Oh, okay.
Say what it is.
Oh, okay.
Um, on page five. So I'm confused about a lot of this, it happens more than once, but on item one D, you say additional under-story planning will be needed along Hilltop Road. I thought that since Terry changed her mind, I thought we decided not to.
She changed her mind in a different way. She didn't say the planning wasn't needed, she was trying to assign responsibility to a different person. That's not our deal.
Okay, but.
Right, do you mind?
Yeah.
We can't say. We're still gonna do under-story.
It should be the responsibility of the applicant, it should be the responsibility of the owner, it's like, that's, you know, neither here nor there for us.
But we should then say, shouldn't, who will, by the still need to be decided that?
No, it was.
Before they can build it.
But I just want to know, is, is the under-story planting still required?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it was raised.
It's not part of the destroy what's there, the.
No, this, this was specifically along Hilltop Road, it was mentioned, um, not on the interior of the buffer side.
That's right.
So this was where like, um, there was original planting there and then.
Kim was saying, no new trees will destroy other trees, and they said, how about under-story, and she said, okay.
We're calling it, yeah. Yeah.
We, we would like to add trees because we just put the gas and the water.
Yeah, we're just discussing ourselves in this, that's okay, that's okay.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we are just agreeing.
Okay.
We just want to get started.
Item one F.
You're very close.
When you say thirteen new trees, I just want to make sure that includes the three additional trees, or should that be sixteen?
That should now be sixteen, you are correct.
Ah, good catch.
Okay.
That's why we have to.
And then, um, I think on item two on that same page, when you say the planning board engineer can still assess, rather than propose design of the septic, I think you should probably say something about the septic system is existing but never used.
Okay.
And the water board, whatever they're called, um, has approved it.
Water board. Water board.
Water boarding, I knew that didn't sound right.
This is what happens.
Question, water boarding. Hello?
And then item.
I have a request.
Item I. The property is bounded by, by wooded area and well setback from the lowest elevations of the property. First of all, the property is bounded by wooded area and the proposed house is well set back, not the property.
Okay. Yeah.
And then the lowest elevation of the property, I don't know what that means. It's setback from the lowest elevation.
The lowest elevations are downside, you know, heading toward Old Road, and it's far away from there, so that's where it would cast the most shadow is from, you know, from where it would be, if it was like sitting on top of a promontory. So it has good setback from there, so that I don't anticipate anybody like lower than the house getting any shadowing from them on the downslope side.
Cause isn't the bottom line is that there's no shading impact on the adjacent properties?
Basically, yeah.
Isn't that more important than any kind of impact on the property itself?
Yeah, yeah.
So shouldn't, shouldn't we say no shading impact is expected on adjacent properties?
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
It's a good catch, too.
Um, and on the next item ten, do we have, don't, shouldn't we say what the actual lumen level is?
Yeah.
Besides that it's just below twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we're always saying it's just saying below, nice to have the exact number.
And on item eleven zoning requirement, shouldn't that be for the timing D C during construction, rather than let's say, rather than, uh, prior to permitting?
Because that, that happens during, that happens during construction. Yeah, it could be DC and PTO. Yeah.
So it should be both?
DC and PTO.
PTO, okay.
Yeah, because they'll have to give us verification prior to NC.
And then on the next page. Okay, so, so the, the fill, the additional understory planning is fine on the next page in that last paragraph, right?
Yes.
And then, I, I don't understand the next item B, the property would have to be graded for a new house, and with a new house under consideration, it would not be purposeful to have the property graded twice, what the hell does that mean?
That means one of the conditions of the enforcement order was to regrade, restore the property to its original grading. You know, so at this point, is it really purposeful for them to go back and regrade the property to its original just to regrade it for a house?
Why can't we just say it's not possible, we're saying it's NC anyway?
Okay, I mean, we could say that, and this was also.
You could actually require them to regrade as it originally was.
Yeah.
No, but.
And this was the, this is where Tony had an edit to, this was what was advised by John when we talked to him, is this, don't focus on this criteria, focus on the buffering criteria and the landscape criteria.
Well, I'm just saying, the fact that we're saying it's NC, which I think is fine, basically means that, I don't, I don't, I just don't understand what you're saying there, but if, if it's okay with everyone.
Ema, I want to add, this was guidance from John Field, I think it's what I gave you.
Yeah, so that was the. Yeah.
The other thing I was thinking, Ema, would you be willing to join them in their hearing with the ZBA?
I was probably going to do that, yeah, anyway, because still, probably have questions.
They'll have questions about things like that.
Thank you.
On the next item, regrading and replanting of the easement. Driveway easement area is filled in with natural growth, accessing this area for regrading and replanting would be detrimental to the existing buffer. Aren't we adding some trees or saplings in that area?
Not in that area.
They're making a comment that nothing was being added to the, to that driveway easement.
Hill to hill driveway access.
And, and they agreed to add something there, if I remember correctly. I don't know.
Not to the driveway easement that goes off. Yeah, I thought it was Kim's take that there was, for one, it was, it had, although not represented on the plan, it had smaller than the six inch undergrowth coming in in there. And that if you were to come in there and reforest, then to access that for the reforestation would be just as detrimental, you kind of get like at best a net zero sum.
Okay. And then the next item for replanting of trees in other areas of the lot, and then you talk about the thirteen, which are now sixteen.
Sixteen.
Aren't, aren't most of those trees actually, um, within the buffer, which is going back to A and not in other areas of the lot?
Yeah, the, um, that's true, yes, they are.
Now, replanting of trees.
Yeah. In other areas of the lot.
So I, I wonder if that paragraph should be added to item A.
To item A.
And if item E should be none.
Yeah, we could put it as an NA, we felt there was, the, no additional planting was needed for, with the restoration of the buffer.
I mean, because, because there are no trees planted within the.
Right, right. What did we do with B, did we leave that at NC or NA?
NC.
We just had a C there.
Not applicable, more.
Maybe.
Appropriate.
Yeah.
I think so. Per, and then you explain per John Field's guts.
Yeah.
So then E is going to be NA as well?
Yeah.
And you're going to explain the NA and E as what?
The NA is going to, oh, for E is going to be basically that with the replanting of the existing buffer, it provided adequate screening both through.
Okay.
Through the reforestation saplings.
Can't that align?
Yeah, yeah. And the, and the additional sixteen trees, that no additional planting outside of the buffer was supposed to be necessary.
Okay, and then item on page sixteen, item two, under appendix F, that should say locate the six trees, not three trees.
Yeah, okay, so here's, here's what I revise that to.
Playing games or?
It's not games.
No, I'm talking about Ema.
So now, after I went, after I went through and, and talked about the three trees, I, I went and.
Can you read it, I just can't.
Okay. After the house is framed apart to certificate occupancy, the applicant shall, with the planning board's landscapes consultant under butters, field locate the six trees, six trees, three currently shown on the approved plan. And an additional three which may be smaller than the standard ten to twelve for planting in, in the existing wooded area at the corner of the west and south property lines adjacent to twenty Hilltop Road.
What, you say six trees and three trees?
No.
So you locate the six trees.
Six trees, three currently shown on the plan and an additional.
Oh, okay.
Three additional. Okay.
Can you, can you, what word says it may be smaller, can you say with the approval of the board and landscape?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So twenty, twenty nine?
Oh, twenty nine, no problem.
Okay.
I'm going to ask, we don't know about twenty nine says.
We got twenty, right?
We're just asking twenty with.
Oh, right. Good catch. Okay, shall I move?
Yeah.
You, yeah, you did all this.
You deserve to.
I move that we approve certificate of action with the modifications noted for scenic road site plan approval for sixty old road.
All approved.
Aye.
Unanimous.
You.
Thank you guys, good job, really good job, yeah, good luck with things.
Thank you.
You, congratulations.
Ema, I will join.
Yeah, well, the neighbors are going to be so happy.
You will, we'll say, yeah.
How about the block over?
Yeah.
When will you start construction?
Um, we're collecting, maybe, uh, we need to.
Uh, we need to have the decision to.
A lot of things now, yeah.
So, that's what they're telling you, that it's a problem in nature sometime around, um.
I think we want you to start in November, but maybe.
You can try to buy. No, call me up first, because if I. Okay, thank you. Great job. We have more work to do.
More work to do.
We already, we already want.
Forty nine Lawrence.
Forty nine Lawrence, you want to start with.
Is that the memo you sent?
You want to start with Dana and a site.
So originally, we have a site visit next Tuesday at eight AM.
Yeah.
For three Black Oak.
I prefer not to go at eight AM.
So, Sue, can you find the eight AM next Tuesday?
I'm just going to drive, I'm going to drive by and see.
I think I'm not going to be heading out of town.
I have a ton of clock going.
Oh, it's not going to take us long.
And then you, if you want to.
If you change it to ten, I'll join you, otherwise it'll hurt.
I can get it, that's, but I can't schedule an appointment with Marius, he can go before the hearing, just see if he.
That's great.
You could do late thirty?
Yes.
Or do we meet thirty?
Is that all right?
Yes.
Then I could be at the.
Yes, very.
All right, I mean, it is, it is another class that has.
And Steve can just drive by too.
Oh, you already did, okay, well, if you want to send it out.
No, I mean, you can just drive, I'm going to drive.
But is it, is it, is it some of it, or is he, wait, what's it, what else?
He doesn't know that, I think he said he was going to keep part of it, just to see the comparison.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were going to do.
He really don't, I told him not to do anything.
Oh, well, that.
Yeah, I think so too.
So.
But it's not a public to hear.
Yeah, so they're going to expect some.
Okay, Ema, you take over, let's take us home.
Okay.
Yes, it's A, A, A.
Forty nine Lawrence. You have all looked.
Alyssa, you can't make it at eight at all?
I can.
Okay, we're going to do it at eight now.
Oh, we're doing it at eight.
Yeah.
Fine, I could be late.
Awesome.
No, you've sent the notes.
I think this is fine, that should be.
Okay.
We had another discussion.
Well, then you water it. Correct, and you don't have to slough pesticide over, you know, you don't have to dump tons of dirt.
Hi, Dana.
So the only, yeah, all right.
Just because we.
Yeah.
I move that we approve the, uh, COI site plan approval amendment for forty nine Lawrence Road.
It is flat.
Minor modifications.
So it's a flat area. Have we said that anywhere here?
Said what, wait?
What's that?
I said, have we said anywhere here, one of the reasons we say this is okay, is because it's level and flat?
No, I mean, I didn't think that was one of the reasons why, I thought the reason was.
We didn't talk about that.
Yeah, I didn't think we talked about.
That's because it's in the back.
They thought it was just because it was in the back and not visible.
All right, yeah.
We didn't talk about flat.
I wasn't, I'm sorry, this is weird. Well, that's.
We're in the middle of a vote.
All approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Want to stay?
I'm staying just because it wasn't around anyway.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Planning board minutes from February second to sixth.
Okay, yep, you did them.
Yep, I said the corrections.
Okay, got it.
Beautiful.
I move that we approve the minutes.
From two six.
From February sixth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Except that I don't.